Once you guys are ready.
So Jen, before you guys, before you leave today, what Chrissy had called you about for the work session? I just want to get together, make sure that everyone's on the same page and because I was confused also by allowing the public and I was like, I feel like this is just to broach the subject and then if you want to have it like, because ultimately it's not up to them, it's up to you guys. But I wanted to make sure that people had spoke out.
Yes.
Content was able to hear us.
And that's exactly what I texted Chrissy back.
Like, okay, well, okay, yeah, I guess we can listen and I was like, are they allowed this?
No, not very much.
That makes me feel better. Okay. I thought I was sniffing blue. I should stop sniffing blue.
That's what Vicky would say.
Yes. Oh my gosh.
Okay, we're ready?
We're ready. Thanks.
Good morning. We are here for the Board of County Commissioners, nine twelve, sorry for the delay. We were having technical difficulties. Today is March eleventh, twenty twenty five. This meeting will be streamed live on RBC YouTube channel. If you would like to participate in this meeting and are unable to travel to Mecca, we will have a, be having a virtual link to the meeting set up in Ranely at the Annex Building located at one seven four nine seven Highway sixty four, Ranely, Colorado. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment period. Any member of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you are addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you are requested to limit your comments to three minutes per member or five minutes per group. The public comment time is not for questions and answers. It is your time to express your views. To ensure there's adequate public comment time, please provide your name and address prior to the meeting by contacting the board assistant at nine seven zero eight seven eight nine five seven five. If any member of the public would like to comment at this time, please state your name and address for the record. Do we have anybody for public comment time in the room? Seeing none, anybody online? Seeing none? This is a tentative agenda?
Do you have Wendy?
Oh, yes, Wendy. Sorry about that.
Hi. No, no, it's okay. I was just gonna hop on and say that I don't have a comment. You can go on, but you've done right assisting terms, I was gonna say it.
Perfect. Thank you, Wendy. This is a tentative agenda which includes all information available as of March eighth, twenty twenty five. The final tentative agenda will be posted at the RBC Historic Courthouse, five 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 Main Street, Mecca, Colorado, and at the Ranely Town Hall, two oh nine East Main Street, Ranely. Moving on to line item D.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt the agenda as written.
A second. I have a motion and a second. Will you please call the roll shot?
Scritfield?
Aye.
Overton?
Aye.
O'Hair?
Aye.
Moving on to line item two, consent agenda, line item A.
Oh, sorry. Let's see. So we are just going to have an interview with Hal Ray?
That's what we're doing.
Okay, sorry, I just, my apologies. Can't do two things at once, I can't. I move to approve the consent agenda items, including payroll management, council table, meeting minutes, motor vehicle DMV report, and DHS registered warrant.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Sean, will you please call her?
Overton?
Aye.
Scritfield?
Aye.
O'Hair?
Aye.
Moving on to line item three, business under A. We will be interviewing helpers for the weed advisory board and possible appointment to the board. So come on up, Hal.
That's me.
Thank you, and sorry we were so late.
Oh, wow. It's like being called a principal's office. No worries. No, I'm good. Have a seat. All right. Thank you for doing this, Hal. I appreciate you.
Yeah, well, when I first got the email, you know, I don't do as much as I used to and so I thought, you know, if there's some young energetic weed slayer out there that wants to be on the board, sure, because I've been on it for quite a while. But then I ran into you and I ran into Mark F. Conceal and a few people and we did, we need, we didn't even have a meeting last year. And so we kind of need to at least have a spring and a fall meeting, just to, so everybody's kind of up to speed. But anyway, I did weeds for a long time, twenty years with Forest Service. Actually, was a certified applicator with the old private applicator EPA program in the seventies on the, on the family of that. So I'm sort of a weed guy. I retired as the US Forest Service reason to invasion species pesticide.
So the, the reason for this board is to advise Jane, Bren, our weed department and you guys?
So over the years, it is. It's truly an advisory board. We have, we have no, no power, but, but over the years with the different program managers, we have, we have Jane now. We usually, we usually used to have a spring meeting and kind of discuss what her budget was, identified with, with her several people on the, on the board, maybe identified priority areas to suggest and that kind of thing and, you know, priority species, that sort of thing. And then, you know, over the years, we used, you know, we did some cooperative stuff for Forest Service and the BLM. I don't know how this, this budget thing's probably gonna throw that in the kink, but it won't last forever. And then, and then we normally had a meeting late fall and kind of wrapped up of, of how the summer went, you know, employee hiring stuff and a lot, we did a lot of discussion on cost share. There was years that we actually increased the cost share for one reason or another. We had a couple of pesticides that over the years we said we would not cost share, one being Roundup and one being two four D. The reason was they, those really don't target the invasive species that are the high priority. And so that's, we had a little pushback from some of that, but it was easy enough to explain. So it's, like I said, it's just an advisory.
Well, we appreciate you and hope that you do have some meetings and stuff because it kind of, when Jane comes to us, it gives us, gives her a little backup to some guys that, that you and Mark especially, maybe if you can make anybody else or we can get on that.
We've had a hard time getting somebody on the range. And it's just, it's just been tough. So hopefully we can, you know, hopefully that can be remedied. It doesn't take a lot of time, you know? Like I said, two or three meetings a year is really all we've ever had. Back when we were rewriting the county weed master plan, we had several meetings, of course, but.
Well, I hear different things from, from around the people that have problems or it's getting bad here, getting bad there. I, you guys are, I'm sure more familiar with that, so I would appreciate any input. And if we can address that before, you know, we get away from it.
Well, nobody's more disgusted with my expertise than I have right now as far as the amount of weeds they've been doing the last couple of years. But of course, it's all budget driven, priority driven. But yeah, and Jane's been very open to having a meeting. It's just a matter of getting them set up. Have you got the board filled or just me and Mark so far?
No, just you and Mark.
So speaking of that, and I, I get the budget issues and so forth, but what can we do to, on the forest land? I mean, that, that, it's not yellow star, this was one of my thinking of.
Oh, you're thinking toad.
Toadflax. It's just amazing and we don't know how bad that can.
There's even higher priority ones to toadflax because it's already here. You know, we've, we've got some of the napweeds coming from, from down south. They're getting our toadflax, we're getting that napweeds. This, this OHV trail has, has really been an avenue to scatter weeds and that's just the, that's just the nature of the beast. As far as the Forest Service, you know, just anytime you have a chance to speak with, with those people in those positions, just emphasize that it is a problem. We do have, I think, we had a cooperative agreement with the county when I left. I assume, or I hope it's still in place. They were giving me a little bit of money for some roads and campground stuff. That's probably dried up this year, I guess, just from what I've heard. But anyway, yeah, that's for right now because they don't have a weed person.
So what is the poss, and, and I get the whole NEPA and the whole licensing and all that. What's the possibility of finding some avenue? There are people that are, would volunteer to do that, especially along those ATV trails. What is the possibility of that? What would we need to jump through those? Somebody talk about it later if we don't.
Yeah, as long as you're not doing restricted use pesticides and it's under the supervision of a, somebody like me. I, I use volunteers all the time. I, I had some of my outfitter guides that were so inclined in doing some weed stuff. I had some of the range permitees doing some stuff because it was in their best interest as well as the Forest Service. But now without a, a weed advocate in the Forest Service itself, that's probably slipped. I know I talked with Curtis, the district ranger here just a few weeks ago, and, and we talked a little bit about the weed program. You know, he's, he's concerned about it now. Of course, he doesn't even have a trail crew, so I'm not sure what's gonna happen.
And I do wonder, yeah, whenever, next time you have a conversation with.
But, but I mean, every time you run into a district ranger or a program manager, you know, just, just remind them that there is the, and, and it's, and it's directly tied to quality of wildlife habitat. It really is. It's not just a cow, a sheep problem. It's wildlife habitat and, and some of those species, it's, it'll increase erosion a lot. So it's water quality and on.
No, I, I was just making myself note here. I would like to, we could have, have somehow line up a meeting with Jane and figure out what her plan is and what's going on with the weed part of the project.
We board?
Yeah.
Okay, I can do that.
Good. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
While I'm here, I'm gonna put my White River electric on. I mentioned Dawn here a couple of years, a couple of weeks ago. Would be nice to, to wrap up the fiber agreement with the county and White River Electric. And I think that somewhere in this building, Dawn was gonna look for it. I don't know if he's had it. But as of a couple of weeks ago, it was still here somewhere, so it'd be nice to wrap that up.
I think he heard you.
Yeah. Oh, I know it. Yeah. He was gone when I thought about seeing him. Okay, is that all you mean? All righty.
Agreement itself has actually been approved. It's part of the.
Hal?
Hal, that has actually been approved.
Oh, good. So it's back to our.
And I don't know, Eric, do we send, do we just need to send that to them? I mean, I, was there any other, was that amendment they approved back in November?
That last email it said to me, you had a question on how it was entirely what it was said. And it says we.
It was just whether it was for a second or a third amendment, but yeah. So no, we still have a how, but it is.
Okay. I have a water meeting down there this afternoon at two thirty, so I'll give them the good news.
Okay, yes, it is done. And we took copy over today.
Oh, great. Thanks.
You got it. Thanks.
Alrighty, moving on to line item B.
Madam Chairman, I move that we go into executive session pursuant to twenty four dash six dash quarantined for the CRS to confer with the county attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategies for negotiations, instructing negotiators regarding position proposition one twenty two MOU with CSU and a MOU between BLM Colorado State Office and ECNC.
I have a motion and a second. Will you call the roll shot?
O'Hair?
Aye.
Overton?
Aye.
Scritfield?
Aye.
Alrighty, we will come.
Hurry guys.
I will come grab, I'll come grab you a link when, when we get to that portion. Thank you. Commissioners, would you let me in there or not?
Thank you.
And we are going to actually jump to line item R, having a discussion with Mary Cunningham, with the Meeker Classic Sheepdog Championship Trials regarding the hospital shuttle and new bleachers. If you want to come on that, Mary.
Thank you.
No, you're fine. And I brought some propaganda for you, not as much as I usually have, but you guys need to be like the whole magnets for the sheepdog trials. And there's a printout of what I sent you email, all right?
Thank you.
There. I know this is all you guys have time for, but.
Thank you.
There we go. All right. Basically, I mean, I came here last year and we were asking for the use of the shuttle. You guys were all so nice just to, well, just to stand back here.
You can sit down if you want.
Okay. I'm not on trial here. The shuttle worked out really well last year because we've used it since 2006 or '07 for several years. And we're starting to build back, we couldn't use it for a couple of years. So we're starting to build back and retrain all our visitors. It's really, I've talked to some of our bus drivers and it's kind of like they have a captive audience when they're riding in the bus and they tell them all about Meeker and they're very appreciative of it. So we have four or five stops and I think I included in your packet a copy of the stops where we go. We've been asked to go out to some of the campgrounds, but we're not going to even address that until later on. So, but we go to the White River Inn and the Blue Spruce right here where the dogs are and Fairfield Center during the quilt show and the trials. And it works really well when people plan because a lot of times people will come and part of the party will get bored and want to go downtown. So it's a great way to bring people downtown to restaurants and businesses. So we're just asking for the use of one of your shuttles during the sheepdog trials. It worked out really well last year. We hired drivers and we did it all five days. And we really promote Rio Blanco County and the hospital. And so that is the number one thing that we'd like to ask for. And if we're granted permission, I'll probably try to line up the 4H van as a backup if something doesn't work. You know, if there's some conflict with the scheduling. And we try to give back to the community. We always send our entertainers out to the Wellbridge Wing a couple of days and they really enjoy that. And so that we do that and we'll have some liability coverage and get all the right documentation to the county for the drivers and make sure that there's no illegal drivers driving the bus. So that's, we'd really appreciate it if we could do that. And I don't know if you have any questions or concerns about that.
I, so we have two of those units, right, Vicki? Two buses?
Buses.
Are we having a conflict with, are we depriving old people or what we're doing to seniors? Excuse me?
I'm almost there.
I'm past that, so I didn't think it hurt.
Kind of like using, you know, landfill.
Yeah. Are we, we're not in conflict with anything that we're pulling off and taking care of our people or how is that working out?
We haven't, didn't have any conflict last year that I'm aware of. They worked around that schedule and if someone needed to go to the pharmacy or someone needed to go to the post office, they were able to work around those things, okay? Now I can reach out with pioneers just to make sure that, that I, you know, they just didn't tell us anything, but from my understanding.
I didn't hear anything.
You know, we have another vehicle that is multi-passenger that sits around for a lot of the computers.
The issue, yeah, that we could loan to them to do the activities, yeah. It doesn't have the accessibility that the two vans have.
No, but I don't know whether all those people. It was just an idea. We have another van that does use a lot of.
Is that like the 4H van? Is that the one with 4H?
It's similar.
This one you could actually take four-wheeling if you need to.
You have to climb like.
It's over higher. It's a van like the 4H, but it's full of grass.
Oh, okay. You know, we're open to whatever. I didn't know of a conflict in, in the. I didn't know of a conflict in, in the past before we, I think up until when Margie, when Margie was still at the hospital. Up till then, we used it and we just used, the shuttle drivers did it and then they just mixed in our runs with the sheepdog, with whatever the needs were. But things have kind of changed and so we were kind of operating independently, but we're willing to do whatever. It's just, I think, a good service for the community and it helps the downtown businesses and helps our spectators. So we're open, I mean, I could, I didn't know who I needed to reach out with. I thought I'd start with you guys first, who I needed to talk to at the hospitals.
Getting to the hospital, ah, I don't remember. I don't know who was handling it now.
I think Ty helped with a lot of that. I don't know. That's the hospital now that he's not there. I don't know who it would be. But to follow up on your question, as far as senior nutrition program, we actually have our human services director in here. Have you heard any complaints about seniors not having access to chuck wagon when they're using the van?
No.
Okay. So it does end.
And we also, I, Vicki Crawford that's out at the wing, we also, we encourage them to bring their people out to the trials every year.
Sure.
Free of charge and we could also include that in the shuttle too if they, so, you know, we're workable. We just appreciate it having, it's just a nice little. I can't say the word, amen, amen, amenity, and minutes. So, but we would appreciate it and, and if you guys can discuss that. And then the next thing is, is I just wanted to let you know, we got funding and were able to purchase two new bleachers. There were two of our bleachers that are out at Fairgrounds. We have a couple of ten bleachers out there and two of them had been damaged. So we got funding and just purchased, ordered two new ones. I think we, it was like thirteen thousand dollars, but we got some funding for it. Yeah, just sticker price, yeah. So they will be coming. Nick said we could get them delivered there and then we'll assemble them, but they're, the county is welcome to use them. Kind of what our agreement has been and that's the other thing I wanted to talk about is, is we just leave them there and the county can use them and it's separate during the sheepdog trials when we need them. Is kind of how we work that. And then we've got another set of bleachers that we purchased in two thousand and seven that are bigger ones that are out there also. So I didn't know if it would be a good idea for us to idolize everything that we have and that we borrow from the county. Like for a written document or if, you know, because people change. I remember a couple of years ago when Sean was at the rec district, still he was, they were using those bleachers. And we came and got them and he didn't understand why we take priority over all game. And I said, well, Sean, that's, those are our bleachers and he didn't realize that. And so he ended up purchasing some, but we. So I didn't know what the best solution or just keep up a line of communication from year to year. If you guys wanted a document to tell you what, like our, our, like the ticket stand and the bleachers and our, our panels or what you wanted to do. If that was wise to have that or just go on as is.
I guess I would encourage an MOU.
I would too. Oh, I just happen to have a draft one, one draft.
You're ten steps ahead of us, aren't you?
And, and I, I just think that's really good because people turn up or all the time, you know? I, I have all the records and everything that we could do that and I, who would I contact Vicki or, okay? Okay, okay. And we cover the insurance on all of those anyway and do that. And we're trying to get, two of our board members, Regis and Jay, think that we could fix those other two bleachers. So we probably have twelve sets of bleachers instead of tens, which would be good.
Yeah.
Great. Okay, sure. Thank you, guys. And I, so I did just get a contact, somebody by the name of Chris and a phone number for the hospital, for the vans at hospital. If you want that. So of course, the ninety-seven oh four five six seventy-seven oh one. And so I guess it sounds like there hasn't been much of a way of conflict and so forth. We leave one van, right? We only, they only use one. So I would support them continuing to do that.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Kelly, could you?
Um, four five six seventy-seven oh one.
Oh, one, okay.
Okay, Vicki, you can help. Oh, it's named Chris.
Yep, Chris, somebody else.
And then you have my email?
I do.
Well, thank you. Well, I appreciate it. We thank you and we want to do whatever we can.
We appreciate you guys and what you do for Rio Blanco County. If you'd like to work on that.
We hope we do good things and so we're, it takes everybody. That's, I mean, it just takes everybody. It takes the village. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else in the gallery that we need to make sure we move, move to so that. Okay, so we will go back to line item C. Is a discussion regarding the retention policy for various documents and other media to include those on the RBC website or other media and linked websites. In light of House Bill twenty-one dash one 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 zero. So Vicki, do you want to start that discussion, why, you know, having this on the agenda?
Sure. So back a couple of weeks ago, the commissioners had asked about an overall update on ADA and the expenses we've incurred. And there was some discussion in the YouTube videos we pulled off and whether we should have kept some out there, whether we should have kept some out. So right now they are off the website because they're not, right now, the closed captioning has not been audited. It's not been checked and we know that there are some errors in that. Again, there's nothing wrong with having them out there if it's something that you guys decide you want to do. But we do know the closed captioning in many instances isn't picking up the correct words. It's not identifying who's speaking and when they're speaking, which is an understanding that that might need to be done. We were going to have, Jennifer and I were going to meet yesterday with a company that does provide closed captioning services. Unfortunately, they had to cancel the meeting, so I'm not able to give you an idea of what that would cost to do that. But I can, I'll continue to pursue that and set up a meeting with them to just get an idea of what is that service? That would basically take our YouTube videos and our live streaming. It would route, and I don't know what particular name of it is, it's an IT type phrase of how that, you've got video and then you've got sound. And that sound file, like WMA or whatever that is, they take that, then they go through it, make sure it says what it was, that captures what it said. And then that can be reloaded up into the YouTube file and then pushed out. So really, that's kind of, that kind of documentation. We've got in Sean's office, of course, the official recording again is Sean's recording that's that little doodad right there. That's it. So that is the official recording, the commissioners. That has never changed. That's always been the official recording. The other thing, part to that is, thinking here, something else, oh, documents. So if someone requests minutes for resolutions, again, the official records of that is through Sean's office. Not necessarily what's on the website. So again, retention wise, if you guys want to think about that, give us some light direction. We want to talk further about that. The other thing I did give you today was an estimate you'd ask for what the actual costs are so far since this twenty-one, one 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 zero has gone into place. After working with the ADA team and coming up with some, some of the information, I, I don't think I forgot anything, but just wanted to touch on that. So Civic Engage, our website hosting, that is who does what's called our CMS. So if you're looking at the legislation, CMS is Civic Engage. They're the ones that host the website for us. We pay fifteen thousand dollars a year. We certainly started with Civic Engage prior to House Bill twenty-one. But going forward, they're supposed to be making some improvements to the website. I don't know. We're going to be having our audit, which is one of the things that we'll be talking about. We will be having a website audit probably at the end of the month and they'll tell us, identify things where we might have some issues. You know, things that we can, need to address. But again, we're, right now, that is through Civic Engage, easier CMS. We've purchased, and this is hard cost, Adobe Pro software.
Sorry, so, so who is it that does the audit for us? What's that company's name?
That company is called Converge Accessibility.
And it's not listed in here, right?
Yes. It's about the fifth one down.
Oh, Converge, okay. So we've got two costs on that one.
Right. There's two different, because they're doing two different things for us.
And that's what you're talking about is the audit? Would be included in that seventeen thousand five hundred?
No, I think you're looking at Continual Engine. Converge Accessibility. Oh, no, yeah, the Converge Accessibility is a ten thousand dollar cost and that audit is within that.
Is within it.
Now, they are also assisting us with some remediation. They've already done on the solid waste landfill as a test. To see how they would take a look at that. So part of that testing will be that work that they did on it to make sure that all that matches up and that we've got a good press on it. Okay. So going back up to the Adobe Pro software licenses, we purchased a number of those. So hard cost of seventeen-five, that is an annual cost. And that is for the departments to remediate their own Adobe documents. And, and one thing I want to make sure you're aware of is not only is this forward-facing, it will also be internal-facing also. So a lot of these steps that we're taking will be able to utilize for our internal documents as well. So that would be like Sean's minutes, the resolutions, things like that. As we get further into this, we'll be able to, that Adobe is critical for us to be able to do that piece of it along with the Continual Engine software. So no one software does everything, unfortunately. So again, software licenses, and this is from twenty-twenty-two through twenty-twenty-two, this point, twenty-twenty-five. So that seventeen-five will occur again next year. We purchased a public computer for Sean's office for four thousand sixty-five dollars. We still need to purchase a real reader for that, estimated cost of two thousand. I don't think so. I think it's got some screen reading, but it doesn't have the real reader, doesn't have the. Okay.
Yeah, we have it. We have that already down there.
Okay. So that, instead of being anticipated purchase, is already a purchase?
Yeah, they've, it's already down there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Earlier, and I think this was in twenty, maybe the first of twenty-twenty-four, we purchased audio headsets for people that sit here in the audience. So that was a cost of about, I, let's see, let's see if I can find it here. That was about fifteen hundred dollars for those hearing. Hearing, it's not a hearing aid, but it, it helps with picking up sound in this room. So Converge Accessibility and Continual Engine software. So Converge Accessibility, they helped us design our plan that was required by the state. And we continue to work on that on a quarterly basis. And they help give us guidance and say, okay, make sure your website's up to date. This is what you need to include. This is what we need to address. And then again, the testing will be included when we do that here at the end of March. Then the seventy-five hundred is what they did for solid waste landfill to remediate that, those groups of pages. Continual Engine, let's make it a little more complicated with the names. Continual Engine software is the one really that Laura and Chrissy and I have used the most. Although we will be training the other, the other people that have licenses to be able to do their own documents. This is, you take an Adobe document and you may run it through Adobe and it says, you're good to go. But then when you run it through Continual Engine, it actually does a little bit deeper dive to make sure that headings are headings, that table lists are table lists, that fonts are correct, that colors are correct. That it, it's just a much more broader spectrum that is looking for more items to make sure that the accessibility needs are met. Well, because it's, if you were going to try and remediate everything on the first, on Continual Engine. How, how do I say this? So it takes something that, it would make it way more complicated than if we just ran everything through Continual Engine. By solving it with Adobe, there's a lot that it can automatically take care of. We did purchase the Adobe licenses first, thinking that would meet our needs and then later found out that there was a lot of things that it wasn't meeting. So there is a possibility if we could do away with the Adobe Pro software licenses and just go with the Continual Engine. I mean, that is a possibility, but I think it does make it more difficult. I know when, when I've worked through it. But again, these are costs that we've already incurred. Staff time for just Laura, Chrissy and myself since twenty-twenty-two, again, Chrissy didn't start until twenty-twenty-four. And we average our cost of thirty-six sixty-five. We have approximately three thousand, which is a thousand hours a year. So that's a hundred and nine thousand, nine fifty. And I would say that that's probably light, a light figure, given that the last four days I spent solely on ADA. So starting on Wednesday, Thursday, most of Friday, and then a little bit of work on Saturday and Sunday. And I didn't even get that far on things that, okay, fix this one. Now I've got to go back and, okay, now I'm going to fix this one. So I would say that's light. Staff time with IT, so again, training, website remediation, meeting, software rollout. They average their time at fifty-five dollars an hour for two hundred and twenty-one hours at about twelve thousand, twelve thousand dollars since twenty-twenty-two. So year-to-date, or, or, I'm sorry, project-to-date, you're looking at about two hundred and thirty-three thousand that the county has expended on House Bill twenty-one one 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 zero. I'm really excited about the March rollout, the March review of the website. Again, this is just the public-facing website issue. We still have backward-facing things that we're going to need to address as time goes on. So I'm anxious to see how close we've gotten in that time period because we've been working a lot on it, I think. I don't know, Eric's not here, Trevor's not here, but that's kind of one of those things that we've all taken big pieces of it. It is a big ask. So anyhow, that's kind of where we were at. If you, I'm not asking you to make a decision today, just kind of giving you an update as far as what we've expended to date. And then if you did want to provide any direction as far as the YouTube videos, that's.
All right. First of all, I want to tell the public how frustrated I am personally with this law. That it is costing us so much money and we are having to take so much money off of the website. It is not our fault. Need to get ahold of the legislators and tell them the problems they're causing. It's just the start of what's going to happen with all of the government websites across the whole state. And it's, it's just really frustrating that we can't be, they're forcing us not to be as transparent as we would like to be. And it's not our fault. They're forcing us to it. The other thing is that I'd like to comment, this is all new. So there's a, there's a good chance that if this continues, that somebody is going to refine this process. And the softwares will get more, come together and be more reasonable. And we're just having a shotgun right now. And I think it will, it will get easier as we go and we are going to have to look at, we're going to have to look at something with personnel. Because we're spending way too much time on this that we are lacking in other areas. So we're, we're. I guess that's all I have to say.
This doesn't even include, you know, solid waste land. You guys have already been experimenting with it, correct? That doesn't even, isn't. And that doesn't even, isn't even included in this cost. So that's even more that we haven't even touched the surface on, so. Yes, I, we've already spent way too much time on it. It's that we're going to spend more.
And Chrissy just said if you will speak up a little bit louder, she's having a hard time without picking up.
Oh. So, I think I might even be more frustrated than Doug is, just for the record. So, because I, I have been so mad about this from the get-go. So here's, I spent a lot of time thinking about this last two days. Especially it, when our terminology of transparency versus convenience are two really different things. And transparency is what we want to be, should be, and we are. So I see those things and do you guys chime in with anything else? It's public notice of all the meetings. Public can attend the meetings that are the county meetings. Now, there are meetings that we noticed, because two of us are going, but they're not county meetings. And they may not be open to the public, so that, that's not our role. We have, again, the media attends, so they report it. Again, that's all transparency. We have access to, the public has access to the minutes and to the recordings, vocal voice recordings. What else am I missing on transparency?
I think that it, it, I feel that it doesn't give the public enough information to hold us accountable.
So, I'm not tracking with you why there, because then we talk about convenience. Convenience is live streaming. You can watch it from your living room. You've got the website. Yes, that is very convenient, but it's not taking away from your accessibility from the other things that we've got it, not saying we don't want it. We want it. It's the state legislator that made this so that we can't make this convenient anymore. And the videos, I say, fit right into that. They are convenient. We can now watch Callie's hands doing this when I talk, because I always do, sorry. But you don't hear anything different than you would hear on a recording otherwise. So that's a convenience. And how much money do we as a county need to spend on the convenience? Where, what's it taking away from? As our budgets get tighter and tighter, hopefully someday they won't, but right now it seems to be, what are we willing to give up? That's the question, in my opinion. Where is our priority? We are being as transparent as we can possibly be and be fiscally responsible. I just don't know that we can continue to spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and I say it's gonna be, yeah, two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars a year or two years, plus all the staff time. Look at what's slipping through the cracks. There's a lot.
Just wanna throw something else out there. By the state law, we can't, anything that we produce, like if we record this, that is public. If there's an outside entity that wants to come in and record these meetings, they are welcome. They can put them out there. It's just that we, as a government, we can't. Anybody else wants to do that, newspapers, anybody else that wants to do that, they are welcome to do that.
So, the YouTube videos, let's get back to that.
You're not in my soapbox, is that what you're saying?
Well, I'm about a chop chop. So, with the YouTube videos, and it goes actually with what you were saying about the convenience. You asked, what should, what should we be doing with these YouTube videos? Because right now, the closed caption's not reading accurately on all, you know. So, one question that I have, I think for the three of us, is even moving forward with the live streaming, because that is a convenience and, and we, again, we want it, but is it gonna do the closed captioning correctly during the live streaming? So I have a couple of different questions, and one is, do we continue to do the YouTube live streaming moving forward, knowing that July first is when we have, we, this bill goes live? And then my second question, and you already asked it, is do we keep those, what videos we do have still up on the web, do we keep those or pull them down? So I think that those are two, especially the, the live streaming one is, is one that I know that I'm gonna struggle with saying that we take it down, but at the same time, we are opening, leaving ourselves open to liability if, if we keep it up there. So I don't know where YouTube are at with those.
If I might respond to that, a couple of different parts of it. So, I think, you know, key to keep in mind is that there are, as Doug had mentioned, as, one of the original things with a House Bill twenty-one one one zero was that there were no systems in place in order to address a lot of the demands that they made. You're right, as technology, in fact, we're working with two companies, both Converge Accessibility and Continual Engine, are fairly new in existence, and it's because they were, Converge Accessibility was very pivotal in working and understanding what these ADA laws that Colorado was going to do and how to counties, cities, municipalities, districts meet those needs. So, it was kind of like a, a new business model for them. The other thing, continual, continual engine developed solely because of House Bill twenty-one one one zero. So, they are all, both new companies, and we've been, I think, maybe more of a beta tester for continual engine, where we've come out and said, hey, this doesn't work, how about this? And they've worked through it and they said, okay, here's how we fix those things. So, you're right, the technology is not up to speed with what they passed. I don't anticipate, I think it'll happen quickly, because people can make, private industries can make money on that. So I think it will develop very quickly, but will it be so that we can fix everything by our live date? I don't know, could possibly be. Most normally, that's gonna be a private industry, and so again, you're contracting with someone to do X, Y and Z. So the videos, they stand as themselves. We did have those still available as a core request. If someone wanted to core those, depending on what that cost would be, to be able to download and save those. We do not have a current retention policy that says we're gonna keep them for a day, a week, a month, a year, those whole videos, or do they go away? So we can develop a plan, if you want to do that with those older videos. The newer videos since January are out on the website. Do we keep those out? Do we not keep those out? Do we follow some other retention schedule? Do you continue to livestream? Do you continue to record on YouTube? So those are questions you don't have to answer today. If you want to give direction, you certainly can, it's a notice meeting. Does that answer everything?
So if I may, I'm sure. I think, so what I'm hearing, the company that you didn't get to meet with yesterday, to look at what it would cost to be able to make those legal. I'd like to see what that cost is for, for the videos to be captioned, right? So the company that you couldn't, didn't get to meet with yesterday, that I know you were trying to get for today. And so we know what that cost is looking forward, but I am very concerned about just throwing money after money after money on this and then leaving our liability, I guess is the term you would use, wide open. So I guess that's where I would, I'm not prepared to make a decision today, but let's look at what that cost is and then, and, and I, I hesitate even to just keep asking Vicky to look for additional, you know, because we can say, okay, so what is it gonna cost us going forward? That's a pretty hard number to predict, and she's got other things to pick us up. So I think we look at what that's gonna cost us, use this as a a basis to run it with and make a decision. Transparency, convenience and cost, I think are the three legs that we have to look at.
I'm still interested in what it costs to fix YouTube so that the closed captioning is not correct, because I think that I'm willing to spend a little bit to keep transparency out there.
I'll just ask transparency or convenience? Just my, my thought.
I think it's both.
You know, and, and it is both. I know I personally go back and watch the videos to refresh my memory and or what, now what did we really talk about, or even, even previous boards? And how, why did they make that decision and what did that conversation look like? So, yes, I am the geek, kind of like you are with your masks, but we, I'm the geek that watches the YouTube videos. And so for, for me, it's educational, and so I, I do, I do wanna know what those costs are gonna, gonna be for us and I think, I think that that's what we wanna make sure that we're covering all of our bases as far as that goes, but do we keep throwing money at this? I, I do, I have that same question, Kelly, and how much and where's our limit? And I think those are some of the questions that, you know, now that we have these numbers, thank you for getting these for us. Very helpful and brings it to reality of what, what you guys have all been doing. The cost it is costing the taxpayers, so. Do you guys have anything else?
Call your legislators. Kind of feels seriously.
I have a comment.
Um, hold on, Wendy, Wendy, no, you have not been addressed by the chair. So, and we are not taking public comments on this. Thank you.
So is this a discussion of public hearing about?
You, you had your opportunity.
Tony Aranda?
You had your, Wendy, you had your opportunity during public comments. We are not taking public comments right now.
So transparency, convenience and cost.
Okay, you're, you know, we're gonna have to remove you. Thank you. Okay. So, are we done with this?
I think so. We're just gonna wait till we get those additional costs and revisit it.
Doug, are you done?
Yes.
Okay. You're fine. So we are moving on to line item D.
Okay. I gotta do something. Line item D. Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we approve a limited waiver application of a planned unit development agreement to North Forty Ranch.
And I'll second for the sake of discussion.
So I have a motion and a second. And so, Dawn, do you, I'm gonna have you, did you, I know you grew up the, the limited waiver application and sent it to us, so.
Actually, I reviewed it, the attorney for the owner of the North Forty Ranch drew a draft of it. I reviewed it simultaneously and Matt for their review as well. Basically what happened was is there was the, the planned unit development that started with Elk Creek and, you know, the, the people who fought the interest in that. Typically, the, the main Elk Creek Ranch is approximately three acres. They have limits on the, the size of the buildings. They have limits on the amount of buildings that can go on each of these parcels. There, there, when they started or required some additional property, wanted to do a swap. So they ended up swapping for this North Forty with another lot that they had. This North Forty is owned by one person and it's forty-eight acres. He wants, the owner wants to be able to build the larger structure than what the, the PUD will allow for the, the three blocks. So he is at, he asked us to look at it. And so, uh, Lea and Matt brought me in and the conversation started. So, uh, we set, we went through the PUD agreements. There is a waiver provision in those PUD agreements. And so we, we talked to the attorney for the owner, Chuck Culver, and discussed what was the objective of the owner. And he wanted to remain as part of the, the, the PUD as far as the Elk Creek Ranch goes. There's easements and other things that are joined on both properties by all of the parcels, but it doesn't seem that the limits that's downward, there's a bigger concentration of three acre parcels that may be against each other, should really apply to the, you know, single owner of forty-eight acres of the four. So, so anyhow, we looked at it, we talked about it. And it basically, it's on an agreement with, with Elk Creek and, and the commissioners regarding the, the, and there's recitals of the different, uh, uh, very variations, but the original PUD plus the amendments to the PUD that's contained within the, uh, the agreement itself. And so the, the, since it's a sole part of the main ranch with one owner, it makes a lot of sense to, I think, to us and, and then the owner, that, that he had the restrictions that the closer compliant owners have in the main part of the Elk Creek Ranch. So, uh, uh, what we're, we, we just would look at it. The, the waiver is very clear that any, that the waiver design, construction and use restrictions are only as to those covenants and the, the, the restrictions contained in the actual PUD agreement regarding the Elk Creek Ranch. That the provisions of the Elk Creek or Blackwell County Land Use Regulations has amended from time to time. So even with what we have done, you know, we do it, it has been a different time, it's going to apply to that North Forty. So he can build a, a home and other structures that, as long as he goes through the regular land use regulations, the building permit, uh, uh, requirements that Rio Blanco County has in order to, to do that. And we, we basically set, set him on, uh, uh, making sure that he was able to get the senior tours of Elk Creek Ranch or Association, and it looks like he was able to get that. So that once he got that, we would present it to the BOCC for their inspection.
So, I, I'm not, I, just one question, I, I guess I'm struggling with why it's, you know, my first thought was, why isn't it, Lea usually brings this to us. And so that was my, my question as to why, how it got to you instead of it normally goes through you? Can you help me understand that?
Yes, ma'am. There are three parts to the PUD. There is a PUD plaque which lays out the lot arrangements, the access and the easements, things like that. There's the PUD agreement that is between the developer and Rio Blanco County. That is what Dawn is discussing, that is a legal document. And then there is a covenant that the each development has. You can only paint your house red using that as a content. That the covenants are really upon, I mean, the covenants are upon the developer and their buyers. We have a part in it that's recognized as they do have covenants, and it's recorded, recorded, recorded. So, back to the point. In this particular case, there was a request that a home be built that's larger than thirty-three hundred square feet. In the PUD agreement with the county, which is the legal document, it states you can only build thirty-three hundred foot square, square foot home. So in order to break that agreement, it then becomes a legal issue, and that's why Dawn was, I hope that was not too convenient, I'm sorry.
And not specifically the regular agreement, modified agreement, so bring it within the requirement. So, that, that's one of the things that, is, you know, we have, if, we're not asking for the agreement to be broken, just to modify to allow this waiver, and this is a single time waiver for this one particular parcel. It's not a general waiver or anything else within the community.
And it's only for thirty-three hundred square foot, larger than thirty-three hundred.
And they still have to go through the regular land use requirements that they have.
And that then allows the building department to proceed with issuing a permit and re, plan reviewing the whole thing. Is that correct, ma'am?
That's correct.
I have a question about this, and I don't want her to drag on, so. In the Elk Creek situation, they all own the land collectively, but they each own the property that their house sits on. If this guy owns forty acres. If this guy owns forty acres that are separate, five miles away and he owns the whole thing, why is he involved with Elk Creek?
I can't answer that. Mister, Mister Commissioner, uh, that is between the owner and Elk Creek and their PUD. I, 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 that's a.
There must be some kind of advantage there, but I can't see it. I just thought maybe you know.
I, I honestly do not, sir.
Yeah, I, I can uh, uh, give you a educated guess that they, that old Elk Creek and the uh, uh, the owner of this forty acres benefit from, you know, use, joint use of the, the property for, for hunting and fishing easements and things like that.
So they can.
Yeah, so they can use all of their properties. In fact, that's one of the things that was, they were very careful to include in here. That the, this doesn't affect any of the easements or other grants.
Okay, I, that's probably separate from this. I just knew.
Commissioners, it appears that, I apologize, I, I, uh, it appears we're having technical difficulties with the audio. It is cutting in and out and Trevor is suggesting that we restart it.
Yeah, that we might have to disconnect this and try replugging it back in. Um, it is like sometimes picking up the audio well and sometimes it's.
I've had a cou- I've had a couple of texts this morning saying that people can't hear or something.
Yeah, so I need to redo that right quick.
So we will go into recess.
Okay, let me.
I'm ready.
I think I've uh, well, to talk about the fact that our streaming system's not working right now and that we can't get it up, so we're gonna continue the meeting without it. Just use the official recording. Um, we'll get the board taking minutes.
So moved.
So done.
What he said.
So, yes, we're having technical difficulties, so we, we are gonna move forward because nine-one-one needs to be up and running. And they're over there working to get nine-one-one up and that's very important that we have that available, so. Um, where were we at?
Maybe we're discussing.
Oh, because you had your last question. Did you have any more questions?
I'm, I'm good. I, I uh. Yeah, go ahead.
Yes.
Um, so it's kinda the same question I've had with the other exemptions or whatever that we do. But just trying to get in my head, being the newcomer, I get to use that card for a while again. So we do a plan and then we change our plan and so then we just go get an exemption from that or take ourselves out of it. And as long as the county approves it, that just changes our uh. I'm not saying that very good, sorry.
I think I know what you're trying to say.
Thank you.
This isn't really on our side, it's on their side. It's what they want to do in their, am I correct? It's what they want to help. Also, I understand what you're trying to say, but it isn't really on our side, it's on their side.
Theirs being the landlord, not LEAF's.
In, in, in better state, I think that this is their planned unit development, not ours. They, you know, they brought that to us, so this is really their agreement. And then we're just helping them waive a certain part of that agreement. Well, and, and the, the PUD itself is the, the, the agreement between the county and Elk Creek. And so we can enforce it if we feel like it's necessary in order to do so. But, but it's, it's, it's more for the benefit for the owners, but then this development's benefit than it is the general county because they, they have, they're, they're much more extreme people in this development than we would be. So it was just the owner that had three acres of property as long as they were, had, had good plans. So we came in, the, the, the building department filed their plan, did a plan review, they had approved, set the size, they approved that they had access around. All the things that we require in our, in our building permit, we don't care for houses thirty-two or thirty-three hundred square feet. It can be bigger, it can be smaller, whatever, as long as it's habitable and safe and above within the guidelines of the county's uh, requirements and then the safety as far as the building code has. So this is, this is some of that. The only reason that we even care is because the landowners for, for Elk Creek care and the associations, so associations willing to waive it for one owner that, that really is a different situated owner than the rest of them. That's, that's kinda what our thought looks.
Ma'am, if, if thi- this agreement is between Elk Creek and the county, it does not at all waive land use regulations, does not at all waive building code.
Thank you.
The county has regulations and they restricted themselves even more than the county has and they're just coming back up a little bit. For this one parcel. For this one parcel.
Yes.
Sean, will you please call the roll?
Scritchfield?
Aye.
Overton?
Aye.
O'Hair?
Aye.
Thank you gentlemen. Moving on to line item E.
Oh, sorry, that was, my apologies, I'm still trying to watch on this bill. Um, E. I would move, let's see, so not, we're not hearing from them. I would move consideration of appointing Renee Harden to the Colorado Service Lot Grant Advisory Board.
I have a motion and a second. So Renee, um, interviewed at our last meeting. She has been on the CSBG board previously and wanted to continue being on that board and we've already interviewed her for that, so. Um, Sean, will you please call the roll?
Scritchfield?
Aye.
O'Hair?
Aye.
Overton?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to line item S.
Madam Chairman, I wanna, I make a motion to appoint Jamie Persiato to the Fair Board appointment.
A second?
I have a motion and a second. We um, had an opening come up on the Fair Board. We had a um, resignation and a position became available. We had interviewed Jamie a couple of months ago now. It's been January, I believe. It was in the Rangelley meeting. Um, and so he was interested in being on the Fair Board. We actually had two and um, we thought Jamie would be the, the better fit at this time. Um, doesn't mean that in the future the other one could apply again and try to get on the board at a future time.
And actually, what we did was give the Fair Board another member because uh, our fair ground manager was on the board. He is part of that board anyway. He's a.
He's ex-official.
Ex-official part of that board, so this just gives them more help to run the fair and that's what we were trying to do.
Will you please call the roll, Sean?
Overton?
Aye.
Scritchfield?
Aye.
O'Hair?
Aye.
Moving on to line item G.
So this, um, so I moved uh, to approve the new CDBG grant application intergovernmental agreement with Northwest Loan Fund.
I'll second that.
So I have a motion and a second. Um, this was a conversation that we had at the last Rangelley meeting. Um, for Northwest Loan Fund to be able to continue to uh, give loans in Rio Blanco County. Um, Rio Blanco County has to be able to um, give them this uh, approval for a, a grant application as well as the IGA, so that's why this is having to be approved and have some condition.
Well, and so at the last meeting, I asked for it to be kinda delayed a little bit to get a better understanding. Um, so and um. The lady's name, I can't think of her name. Anyway, we have an appointment set, but my biggest concern is just really understanding that, how that does or does not interact or overlap the Northwest Colorado Development Council's loan functioning process too. I'm serving on that board. So I'm just trying to understand that. That really doesn't withhold anything from here, so.
And I, and I think that that's a, a valid concern. Um, because I would have the same one, what you, you know, you brought that to our attention that.
There's multiple groups doing this.
And, and why?
And so I, I.
I would, I, in, in a future meeting, can you please help me understand that?
It'd be when I do overshots.
Yeah, when I did it figured out. Thank you. Thank you. Sean, will you please call the roll?
Scritchfield?
Aye.
O'Hair?
Aye.
Overton?
Aye.
Um, moving on to line item H.
Madam Chairman, I'm gonna make a motion for approving the selection policy. I wanna, I make a motion that we appoint Doug Coop as the emergency manager for Rio Blanco County.
And I will second that for discussion.
So. Go ahead.
Yeah, discuss.
Yes.
So, um, we have had the two parties that had applied for this. Actually, we had three, one withdraw. And so we have two um, contractors that have applied for this. Um, I have done a lot of um, checking the waters, I guess you might call it. Um, and have had a lot of very good feedback on Doug and I don't know if it's said Coop or Cup or what, C U P P, however that's said. Um, and so like I say, a lot of really good feedback. I did have one, some, one piece of feedback that was a little concerning. Um, but kinda followed up with others and kinda began to understand that. So that and the fact that they are much, they are in Eagle, Eagle, the town of Eagle is their location. So that is closer than the other one, which was the closest one was located out of Colorado Springs, right?
True.
Um, so those were my primary reasons for being supportive of going down the road to Delco.
So what I, and, and I echo, I'm not gonna repeat everything, I agree with you. Um, those were, were my reasons as well and, and I had also, you know, asked some questions of people that might potentially know this company and also got positive feedback on him. Um, and so, you know, we had, we had the three um, RFPs. We had the four gene courageous leadership Myers Emergency Management and TKG Consulting. TKG decided to remove themselves from um, from the RFP um, list and then we, we just had the two. So um, I think the Myers Emergency Management, they, they have some, you know, they have some expertise as far as more on that high level um, with um, I think with the protection plans and how to run it. But I think Doug Cup and his associate um, have more of that on the ground expertise. Um, at least that, that's what I walked away with and so that was how I made my decision.
Didn't, on everything that you guys said, I did add to that. It's just, that's, that's with what we had, that was our best option.
All right. Sean, will you please call the roll?
Overton?
Aye.
O'Hair?
Aye.
Scritchfield?
Aye.
Um, moving on to line item I.
I guess this would be me, wouldn't it? Okay, so I would move, um, consideration of the Northwest Colorado Opioid Abatement Council, twenty twenty-five intergovernmental agreement.
I'll second that.
So I have a motion and a second. Um, do, duh, Dawn, do you wanna? Um, I know this is a yearly agreement that we do. Do you wanna, um, explain it a little bit?
Yeah, there were, there were several losses, uh, the various opioid manufacturing companies for the United States. Uh, for huge amounts of money, you know, nationwide and in Colorado got a got a chunk of the settlement processes and. And then went down to to a regional and then down to the the county or city levels on most things. By the time you get down to county and city levels, the amount of money that that we had available to us was fairly small and. We really didn't have anything that we could do that was in line with the requirements of using opioid money. So we we went into the regions, uh, and then we turned our, uh, uh, the the amounts that were. The county was entitled to back to the region so they could do and give grants back to the counties or other entities that were. In line with the opioid epidemic in the prevention and and education regarding that. So each year we, uh, have to reapprove for the governmental agreement between all of the different entities that's involved in our region. And, uh, that and we have also, we should have remembered before it was tied, I don't know if we reappointed that or. Okay, oh yeah, I think we did, so we got her on now and, uh, so maybe they go and hold on that project to things in order to do. So we are basically, um, just re, uh, submitting our agreement with that as the fact that we're part of the district. Uh, continue to to use our, the money and it's fairly small. It's like four or six thousand dollars or something like that. Uh, our our small amount of money into the vision, uh, well, a more regional, uh, university system.
Thank you. Any questions?
Nope.
Will you please call the roll?
O'Hair?
Aye.
Overton?
Aye.
Scritchfield?
Aye.
Moving on to line item J.
Line item J, I make a, Madam Chairman, I make a motive, motion to ratify a letter of opposition to House Bill twenty. Five dash twelve fifty-eight Scientific Wildlife Management.
I second that.
So I have a motion and a second. Um, Kelly testified on this bill last week, so I will let Kelly take it away.
Um, I think they had about four hours of testifying, um, testimony on the bill and thankfully we were able to help get it killed. Um, on a vote of ten to three, which was a much stronger vote than we had anticipated. I think there was at least two that. After testimony kind of flipped their direction, so it continues that C P W shall use hunting and fishing to manage wildlife. We was pleased with that one. I'm hopeful for the same kind of outcome on Senate Bill three, see how that goes, because they're they're going right where you're right now.
I'm sure they are. Um, anything else on this one? Doug, are you, no?
No, I'm ready. Just turn it down.
Sean, will you please call the roll?
Scritchfield?
Aye.
Overton?
Aye.
O'Hair? Aye.
Moving on to line item K.
Sorry, that must be me. Um, Madam Chair, I would move consideration of an approval of the F A A for these O. E E O Transfer of Entitlements Agreement with the Federal Aviation Administration for the Rio Blanco County. Meeker Airport G A Ramp Reconstruction Project.
Second.
I have a motion and a second and we have Eric Hockes here to give us an update.
Yes, um, so with any government entity paperwork, non paperwork, so. Uh, last board meeting, uh, or the first board meeting, February, we approved our application to the F A A. To use our entitlement funds for the G A construction, uh, or the G A ramp reconstruction project. This is the follow-up paperwork that they have approved and so this is the contract that we're now signing that says we are. Utilizing these entitlement funds for the Meeker or G A, uh, ramp reconstruction project.
Pretty good.
Any questions?
No, I don't.
Sean, will you please call the roll?
Overton?
Aye.
O'Hair? Aye.
Scritchfield?
Aye.
Moving on to line item L.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we approve work order number three, Rio Blanco County. Colorado Fuel Farm Site Preparation. Graver Project Number Two Five Zero Zero One Nine Five between Graver Engineering LLC and Rio Blanco County.
Second.
I have a motion and a second and we have Eric here again for an update.
So this is our, uh, fuel farm project out at the Meeker Airport. Uh, we, uh, we have a private contract. Graver Engineering LLC for engineering and planning services out at the airport. Uh, they have provided this work order to, uh, provide the civil design services needed for the fuel farm, so. Uh, looking at site preparation for the concrete pads that will, um, hold up the. Fuel tanks and then access road and accessibility for fuel offloading, uh, for the fuel farm.
Any questions?
Oh, this kind of goes in 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 unison with the G A.
Ramp project.
Project work together.
Yep.
Sean, will you please call the roll?
O'Hair?
Aye.
Overton?
Aye.
Scritchfield? Aye.
Moving on to line item M.
Madam Chair, I move consideration of approving the Rio Blanco County Letter of Interest for the. D F P C, we'll have to get artificial, that is Aviation Facility, Western Slope, R five.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. This, um, we had this discussion at the last Rangeli meeting. Um, of potentially having, um, the D F P C, um. Here potentially in Rio Blanco County at either airport and gave staff direction to write a letter. Um, and so I will let Eric take it away again since he is the one that had to, um. Write the letter for us and we, I appreciate you doing that, Eric.
Um, no problem and and like I said, if there's, uh, if there's anything, uh, that we want to, uh. Change in the letter, um, I send it on to the collective group. So the, uh, uh, I believe it is Department of Fire Protection. Or it's Colorado Division of Fire Prevention and Control, is how that that acronym works. And so in the last meeting, I said that. Um, I didn't feel that we were ready to submit a full detailed response to the R five, but that we would, uh. Uh, draft a letter saying here we have these two airports here, the infrastructure for both airports. We're interested in working with, uh. The D F P C to see if there's a good fit. Um, I listed out in the letter. You know, we have the assets here in Meeker at the Meeker Airport, and we have the assets in Rangeli, the Rangeli Airport. And so this is just a, I believe, a, uh, a starting point if they're interested in in continuing conversations with us. The letter is due tomorrow and so if the board is all, um, is happy with what we drafted there. We can, uh, sign off on that and I will send it on on its way to the responses.
I didn't have any questions on the letter. I apologize if you have any questions on that.
I don't have any questions. I'm optimistic. I hope something comes of it. We don't know unless we try.
Great.
I would agree. I think it'd be really cool, but you pull it off. I just don't know whether we. They will consider us, let's put it that.
It's always a shot.
We're just basically saying, no, we don't do anything at all.
Can't have a dance to the date and you can't have a date to the dance, that's yeah.
Exactly. Thank you for drafting that, Eric.
Thanks.
Um, Sean, will you please call the roll?
Scritchfield?
Aye.
Overton?
Aye.
O'Hair? Aye.
Moving on to line item N.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the R B C D N O one nine six. O A Stedman, uh, Tower Lease Agreement Amendment. Updating T-Mobile Communications Equipment Between Rio Blanco County and T-Mobile West LLC.
Second. I have a motion and a second and we have Eric here to explain this one. Let's go.
So, uh, we have three tower sites that we, and there'll be another one here in the next agenda item, that we lease to T-Mobile. Um, on equipment that's on our tower and so they have submitted to, uh, to me the. Design engineer drawings for that. They've also done a structural analysis for the tower. All engineers stand saying. This tower can handle this equipment, will be adverse implications to our to our tower for that. They do pay us, um, an annual leasing, uh, for that tower site and that those, uh, those areas on the on the towers and so. Uh, this is amending that current lease agreement, so we want to make sure that it's, um, staying current with. The, uh, equipment that's in place and now the tower's.
Thank you. Any questions?
No.
Sean, will you please call the roll?
O'Hair?
Aye.
Scritchfield?
Aye.
Overton?
Aye.
Moving on to line item O.
Madam Chair, I would move, uh, approval of the Rio Blanco County. D N O one nine six seven C T P Tower Lease Agreement Amendment. For updating communication equipment on the T P Tower Site between Rio Blanco County and T. West LLC.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. We just discussed that just on the other end, so. Will you please call, unless you have more to add, Eric? No, okay. Sean, will you please call the roll?
Scritchfield?
Aye.
Overton?
Aye.
O'Hair? Aye.
Moving on to line item P. You are just popular today, Eric. We are gonna be discussing with Eric Hockes the review of the R B C Broadband Equipment Refresh Project.
I, uh, I was, I was blown up, Christie. So, um, uh, after we had, uh, completed our broadband grant application that was not awarded. Uh, that grant earlier this year, uh, in January, we got notifications that it was going to be awarded. Um, I had requested that the board, uh, entertain the idea of us reallocating the funds that we were gonna use for matching funds for this grant. To do, uh, some internal improvements to our broadband network. And so then I promised the board that I would do a presentation to them on where I think those funds would be best allocated for the broadband network. The primary funding source is our L A T C F funds. Part of the commitment of those L A T C F funds was that we would designate. What we were gonna spend the money on by the end of, or beginning of twenty twenty-five and that we would have those funds expended by twenty twenty-six. At that point, we designated that we were gonna spend those remaining funds, uh, of L A T C F for, um, broadband. And so this is well within what we designated those funds to be spent with. We're just. Redefining the scope that we're gonna achieve with those funds with this, with the hope of getting the, uh, this, uh. Proposal, uh, being approved by the county commissioners today. We also had some additional funding out there with the. L X, S L R F.
S L R.
Yeah. Slur, slur funds.
L A T C F is.
L A T, yeah, L A T C F is the ones we designated and we had another, uh, bucket of funds and I'll go through that on the breakout. Um, and so, uh, the second half of this presentation is, uh, some additional areas where if the board would, um. Be so kind to fund on on the other side of it, um, we would, uh, we would gladly accept that. And so. Um, to get moving on, um, currently our broadband network is, uh, made up of two main components. The fixed wireless component, of course, if if you're a resident that lives outside of. Rio Blanco, outside of the town of Meeker and outside the town of Rangeli, um, and you are a subscriber for the Rio Blanco broadband. And that includes Cimarron. Cimarron is an I S P, so if you have, uh, if you are a Cimarron customer, you're on the Rio Blanco. County's network, uh, it's just Cimarron is your internet service provider and we as a county, we offer a. An option as internet service provider, but it is one network. And so if you are outside of Meeker and Rangeli, you're on the fixed wireless, which means, uh, we're utilizing. Uh, radio equipment to get the internet to that subscriber's house. If you're within the county's network. Uh, within the towns, you're on, uh, our fiber network. And so again, you could be a Cimarron or a Rio Blanco broadband. Customer, that's the I S P, but at the end of the day, it is the Rio Blanco County network, fiber network that is providing that internet access. And that includes also our, uh, community anchor institutes also. Um, currently the system, the majority of the makeup of the system is what we consider two options. One is gigabyte passive optical network or G P O N. And the other is active ethernet. Really, uh, without getting too far into the weeds on this, uh, what you would look at doing is with gigabyte passive optical network is a. Is is a shared, um, bandwidth capacity, so if I have, you know, two and a half gig port. Um, you know, that's serving multiple people on that and by having the, uh, system manage that, that is how they're getting their. Communication for their their internet. Active ethernet is generally a point-to-point, but you can split that too, so. One can be, you can have two truths in this. Um, but with active ethernet, ten, you tend to have one dedicated. Um, subscriber on that active ethernet and that's kind of the makeup of the system now where we have. If we have somebody that's on one gig service, they tend to be on active ethernet and if they're on the lower packages, we tend to use the gigabyte passive. Network or G P O N to serve that. Um, out in the field, the way this works is there's an O and T and it's, uh. Uh, it is basically transferring from light optical to copper and so you, in your house, you'll have this O and T. Copper plugs in and then depending on how you set up your network, you either have a router. Or it's direct ported into a computer or something like that, but that's the change. Now, um, to give some history lesson, you know, we started back in two thousand fourteen designing this network out at that time. Gigabyte passive optic net, uh, optical network or G P O N was cutting edge and then active ethernet was cutting edge and the equipment we used to do that. And also the O and Ts that we placed in people's homes, the seven sixteen's were also at the edge of of technology. But that was, uh, two thousand fourteen, now we're eleven years past and there's new technology there and. And also the fact is, is these equipments have been running in people's homes for, for over ten years now. And I think all of us just know with our own cell phones and devices, how fast everything is moving. Um, you look back ten years ago, and there probably wasn't too many households with smart devices, you know, the internet connected thermostats, or lights, or locks, or any of those things, and now everybody seems to have, you know, twenty, thirty devices on, on their system. Yet we're still using the same O and T and the same equipment in our system running. Uh, we did start a slow migration a few years back, where we purchased what is the next, uh, technology, which is XGSpon. So really what we're doing is ten times GPON, so instead of a thousand, uh, megabytes per second per port, now we have ten thousand megabytes per second per port. Uh, that's the next evolution, we've started that equipment. However, what we're doing today is presenting the board an option to invest in speeding that up, where I think internally, we would do this over a five-year plan. Now with this opportunity, we're looking at bringing it in with a, a year plan. Any more questions? How deep do you guys want to go into the weeds before I leave yet? Because that is the question, we could go really nerdy if you want.
You want to go really nerdy?
I want to know what you're going to use the money on, and I might back up into some of it, yeah, right now I'm with it.
Okay, so, um, to stay high level, everybody that's currently on the network within the community that is a subscriber has fiber to their, to their house. So fiber comes up to their house, sometimes it comes up the wall, we've done better iterations, but you have fiber to your house, and if you're on the county network and you're not, you don't have a dish up under your house. Um, basically, the numbers break out as, um, we have a capacity, so about fifteen hundred subscribers on our current infrastructure. Um, in Meeker and fifteen hundred subscribers in Rangeley, um, uh, so we have a combination right now without doing anything fiber-wise coming into the two data centers of three thousand subscribers. We're built out about fifteen, about sixteen hundred addresses are on that, so about eight, it was split pretty evenly, about eight hundred in, in, uh, Ra- uh, Meeker and eight hundred in Rangeley on those addresses. Uh, there's always potential to add on to that, you know, there's some addresses we still don't have on fiber, but those come in.
Can I ask one question, sorry?
Yes, ma'am.
And you're talking about just the counties, you're not talking about Cimarrons, or you're talking?
Cimarron is the county's network.
Or, part of that whole system.
This is, this is the infrastructure on the county network.
Thank you.
So they come up into the building, so they come up in Georgia. We have splitters that then split that out, that light out to those addresses. And so we currently use one by sixteen splitters. To do those numbers, we have basically, uh, five shelves of twelve, twelve splitters that are one by sixteen. So that gives you sixty uplinks, sixty ports to provide, and we have to, to provide internet to Meeker and to Rangeley. Sixty in Meeker and sixty in Rangeley. Um, the way there's, they did not even math out in fiber, so they kind of chose twelve and sixteen, depending on whatever company was kind of developing this. So when, um, you look at the equipment to provide this XGSpon, they come in shelves, and each shelf has two cards. And depending on the size of cards, so you have an eight hundred card, which has eight ports, and you have a sixteen hundred card that provides sixteen ports. And so if you have a card, two cards in one shelf, and you do two sixteen, uh, two sixteen hundred cards, you have thirty-two ports. So if we need sixty ports, we need two shelves with four cards that are sixteen oh ones that get us sixteen, that get us to sixty-four ports. And there's also nice to have a few additional ports for, for other stuff, so that is, that's how that math works. Now, right now, we have two E seven shelves, one in Meeker and one in Rangeley, that have two eight oh one cards. And the eight oh one cards have eight ports, so in Meeker, we have a, a shelf with two cards that can do sixteen ports. And in Rangeley, we have a shelf that has two cards that have eight ports, and we have sixteen, uh, uplinks from those cards. So they're, they're basically the same right now. So that, that got us, that first step got us about a third away, and then when we're looking at money, I need four more shelves with, uh, uh, sorry, yeah, uh, sorry. Make sure my math is correct. We need, uh, three more shelves with six more line cards that are sixteen ports to get us to a hundred and twenty-eight uplinks. And that's how that comes in. Now, the next piece of that is that to give internet to these E seven twos that come off of our switches. And so then our switches need modules to be able to uplink to these, these cards. And so we have three switches, two in Meeker and one in Rangeley, and so we need three modules to be able to provide internet to these, these new shelves. The, uh, and then there's always some contingency, so we have some additional hardware. We're going to have to connect, uh, a rectifier to power this, because this stuff's all DC power, there's going to be connections that we need to do. And then, at the end of the day, we have to then replace all O and Ts at every subscriber's house to bring them on. And so we have four hundred and fifty O and Ts on the shelf that we purchased a couple of years back that we're deploying. And we need another eleven hundred O and Ts to finish the project down. Any questions on, about that? I had a whiteboard, I have a whiteboard just.
Well, you showed us, you took us on a tour in, in Rangeley, the Rangeley facility, and so now that you're talking about it, now I understand what you were trying to explain to us in there, because you had lost me in there.
Yeah.
So I, I followed you a little bit better today, so, um, thank you for that, because that did help me.
Now, with technology, I, I'm never really doing scared, it says, uh, the system right now will fall apart and, and you guys need to give me this money to do this, or, or it'll be terrible. Um, that's not the case, many telecommunications companies are still using and still buying the O and Ts that we use. Many telecommunications companies are still on GPON and feel that, who meet their subscriber needs. However, we are experiencing currently an issue in the network, and it's, it has to do with this kind of hodgepodge of where we've gotten today. And one of them is, we had to stand up a new CMS server and, uh, and, and around some issues with, uh, the active ethernet O and Ts being able to communicate once that new server's up. And we're going through that trouble ticketing, but we have been working on this for about three and a half weeks. Um, we stood up the new server, and it wasn't working, so we took it down, and then we worked with technical support, and we stood it up again, and it wasn't. And then last week, we stood it up again, and everything looked like it was working correctly, and we had a, a patch for the ones that showed up that didn't. But now we're kind of in an issue where they're, they're not working, and we're having to troubleshoot through that, or swap them over to XGSpon and, and move them along quicker, and so these are kind of those, I mean, you guys all have cell phones, and what I, the example I was trying to use, because I, I tested this conversation on my wife. She doesn't care about any of this stuff, so if I can communicate it to her, then maybe I can communicate it to you, right? Ten, twelve years ago, you bought a phone, and, and you started putting information on your contacts and certain things, right? And you bought a new phone, you'd have to go into like Verizon or somewhere and do this complicated transfer, and you'd lose half a Saturday and wonder why you made this decision, right? Nowadays, right, you go buy a new, a new phone, and you just set it next to each other, right? And it, it just does that automatic transfer. Now, there's things that still might pop up, but for the most part, you can transfer it. That's essentially the difference between the two systems, there's a, we're working on an older system that is, uh, requires a lot more, uh, technical skill and ability, and it's not so intuitive, and it doesn't just know, versus the, the new system where a lot of it is plug and play. When we go down there, we plug in a new O and T on the XGSpon, it grabs it, it knows what it's doing, provision that, and it's ready to go. On the other ones, it requires a lot more of that tweaking and, and doing the kind of information, uh, doing that transitioning, and oh, that didn't come through, now I have to manually go in and add that in. Those are some of the issues that we're, we're seeing, and, and it's elevated, or, you know, they're not aware to keep it up and running. And then the light side is, my personal goal, and I think it's my department's goal, and I feel it's the county's, is that we really want to make sure the broadband is the best there. That we can provide our, our, our county, and I think we've kind of, we're now at that point where technology, we need to jump forward and catch the next, the next wave and, and get it going. I know that there's been some, um, you know, there's been some public comment that they're not quite as happy with the services that we're providing. And, and I know that we can do better, and I think these, these kind of steps will help us move forward in, in getting those things addressed. And, and it helps optimize my staff downstairs, know their capabilities, I'm getting these issues all, and making sure that we're, we're do, we're doing our due diligence and be a good source of the, of the county's network, and, and we keep it going and not, not let it, um, fall to the other side. Are we good on the XGSpon before I move to the next side of it?
Yes, I am, are, are you good?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, to cover the project funding, uh, these are the latest greatest numbers, so, um, we do have the two hundred fifty-nine thousand eight hundred forty-seven dollars that are, that is in the local assistance and tribal consistency fund, that is the LATCF.
Switch it, slur is the lower one. LATCF is the big one.
I apologize.
No, it's a.
Yeah, um, there's enough acronyms in this thing. So we, we have two hundred fifty-nine thousand eight hundred forty-seven in the S L F R F fund. And we have two million seven hundred and thirty-one thousand five hundred forty remaining funds in the LATCF funds. Two million seven thirty-one five forty for the LATCF. Now, the difference between the two is the S L F R F was designated for broadband, we were required to designate it, or required to have it spent by twenty twenty-six. So that's the two hundred fifty-nine thousand. We do not have those restrictions of the LATCF, the two million seven hundred and thirty-one thousand five hundred forty. Alright, so the next side of that project, just because I'm not shy about asking for things, uh, is the broadband switches, core switches. So, um, what do the broadband core switches do for our network? They are the main hub for everything that comes in and out of the network. They are the core infrastructure, uh, they prioritize bandwidth, they optimize brand, bandwidth, they provide our connections to our firewalls, our V LANs. Uh, they control encryption, protodat- uh, protect data and restrict unauthorized access. Um, and they also provide the, uh, the redundancy in, in the network, so that when that traffic's coming through, we, we don't just have one switch so that we can, uh, if something goes down, then the whole network goes down, we try to keep them so that they can offer backup with one another. Um, their key component, we have, the way the network works now, is we have three core switches that are the main core networks. So there's two in Meeker and there's one in Rangeley. However, they're able to back up one another, so that if one site goes down, the site stays up. Um, currently, we also then, from those switches, we have switches at our nine primary tower sites that then control that traffic for those nine tower sites. So if one of those switches goes down on Lobo, that's a backhaul, so then a number of other things go down, but the main core switches in the data center don't go down. And then we have another eleven smaller switches that are at our secondary, uh, tower sites that operate our broadband. So you're looking at, you know, close to twenty-three different switches, they're all different size, different size depending on their use. Um, one of the things that we've talked about right now is standardizing a platform for those switches. So we have Juniper switches, they were, uh, the main core switches are, were, were purchased in, um, I believe in, in late two thousand nineteen or two thou- early two thousand twenty. Um, they have, uh, so they've been in operation for about four years. They say that you're supposed to get between seven and ten years lifespan on these switches. Um, however, uh, depending on how they're used, the environment and all that stuff that kind of dictates that. And then at the tower site switches, we use, uh, a different style switch, is a brocade switch. Um, and then at our, uh, our se- our, our solar sites, we use a ubiquity, uh, switch. Now, each time you change that, right, it's, you change manufacturer, you change components. Also, one of the things is with standardizing the platform, is there no, uh, there's now options for dashboard configurations to manage those switches. One of the things that I want to get to, to the county's network, is my goal is to standardize it to limit the amount of cost for management of the network. So when you have that, that nice system, you're able to go into that dashboard, a couple of things that we can do is we can do no-touch provisioning, which means, uh, we can have network engineering support contractors, so if how a switch died, we don't have to have necessarily that full in-house knowledge. We can just say, hey, the switch at Lobo is having some issues, go ahead, provision one, send us, we take it up to Lobo, we plug it in, and we plug play with that, that switch. So those are some of the benefits. There's two big, uh, companies out there, Juniper and Cisco, both have really great components and switches and platforms, uh, that can offer us, you know, some, some opportunity to improve those. I do know that our Juniper switches are good, we had some, some security patching that we needed to do on them. Um, we did have a few issues, uh, last year where we had a UPS die, and they, they got rebooted in the wrong order, and they, they had some issues, and we had to come in, clean that up. The brocade switches, Trevor has told me he's a little concerned about them, they've been out there for a while, they're not as robust as their main core switches, so they tend to fail a little quicker and not have a short lifespan. And then the, the ubiquity is another third party that we have to manage and, and look into. I kind of covered these, the, the benefits of multi-vendor system versus one platform. Uh, some different options with the, you know, they now have AI systems built into them to monitor them twenty-four seven. So if there's issues like communication being dropped and supports going down, or we're starting to see some issues with the switch, we get ahead of that, and they're monitoring it all the time. And then we're looking at, at costs, so right now I have Red Technology, which is a company that supplies our switches. They gave us a, a price quote of a hundred ninety-six thousand two ninety-five for the, uh, for all of the switches. Like I said, it'd be really great to replace them all, um, we don't have to do that. Um, you know, we could phase this project, depending on what the board would like to see done. Um, I put in another ten thousand for cabling, equipment, optics, they always seem to grab me on those things, you know? And so then, and then I included a ten percent contingency, so a total estimate for two hundred and twenty-six thousand nine twenty-five for the switch replacement. Um, now, some of the things to consider, I don't ever like to give the board no options. So the first thing is, Eric, what are you going to do if we don't budget projects, right? And the answer is, I think it's number one, my priority and responsibility and my position to make sure that we are moving the broadband enterprise to be in self-sufficient self-life. So the, the answer to that is, I'm going to do my due diligence and make sure I'm. So the the answer to that is, I'm gonna do my due diligence and make sure I manage those dollars that come into the broadband. And we reallocate those for addressing these these uh these priorities. And those priorities don't go away if the board decides not to uh fund like the switch project or X G S. It just what it does is it extends that time hour and it allocates those funds to them. Um we would have an issue like tomorrow if all my switches died, which is highly unlikely, I would have to come to the board. But as it's now, we're gonna build in that process in in managing that. Um it is nice to do one shot, cause then then I get that shot in the arm. It's a little more cost advantageous because those companies instead of them selling me one switch and then I gotta get it up, get it set up. They sell it as a a bundle of projects, so there's a little bit of cost savings there. Uh we do have this funding available, um we were looking at opportunities to where to use it to best uh benefit the county. I think this is an excellent piece uh to benefit. And and one of the things I didn't talk about, the X G S pond migration was with the core switches. That does, the security, safety and functionality of that does benefit the other C A Is, cause it's, we're thinking now with those switches. Those supply network for all the towns, the hospitals, the schools, all that. And so that is a a difference between that X G S pond project and these core switches where um it is advantageous for the entire county. On that side, not just the broadband subscribers like the X G S. Um any questions um on on these projects? I know this can get pretty dry, a little bit nerdy.
I have a near a number on your X G S pond.
Total number was three hundred and six thousand five hundred and eight dollars.
And and so the total is gonna be five thirty-two by thirty-three, so what's the number?
Five thirty-three, you're right.
Five forty-three, three thirty-three is what I thought.
Okay, um. And you are uh advocating using the uh. Uh S L R F funds since we have designated that to be for the uh broadband. And the remainder out of the O H, is that correct?
That is what I'm asking the board to consider.
Because the, so the S L F R F funds, that was already in the budget to go towards broadband, so that's already allocated.
Yeah, it's already allocated, already approved, we just started changing the scope of which what we were planning on using.
But we didn't, we didn't allocate anything to L A T C F funds for broadband, or did we?
We we'd intended, had we been awarded the.
Grant matching money.
Yeah, had we been awarded the grant, we were gonna use a portion of the uh L A T C F funds for that matching.
Okay, so we we did on some level, just that the scope is a little bit different now.
Yeah, so we had uh, within the grant that we had submitted, we had uh matched that six hundred and eight thousand dollars for that, for that match. And uh so we were gonna use the two hundred fifty nine thousand eight forty seven of the S L F R F. And then the delta between the the six oh eight to fifty-nine, and that was gonna come out of the L A T C F funds.
So no supplemental, it's neither.
Yes, there will be a supplemental, we have the specific information, it won't be a budget amendment, but it'll be a supplemental.
So I think that we, I think that the uh broadband for Rio Blanco County has been a very successful program. I don't wanna drop it now, I wanna make it better, I wanna make the the whole county the best broadband in Colorado. Because I think that's helped our our uh agencies around town, people that move here have good broadband. I know that we had, when the county first built out, we did a good job on on the engineering stuff. But when we got to the people that we had installing them in the houses, wasn't, weren't county employees. Kind of uh, it wasn't as quality as we would like to have had, and that's costing us right now. In customer satisfaction. And I think that my goal in this is to make it all really good, all the way through from our point down here. To the computer in the house. And I think that what you're asking us to do right now is the most important first step in getting that done. Because it will uh allow us to do more with less manpower and be able to troubleshoot and take care of it with less manpower and less technical issues, am I correct?
You are correct, uh I think the the points are, it's uh, we uh, we made a number of very first cutting-edge steps when we we took it, we started this journey. I think we've we've gotten a a lot more knowledgeable uh and a lot more capable in what in what we're doing. And and so I think that uh, one by doing these steps forward, we're, we are reducing the level of effort to keeping it running and operating. And to tell you the truth, it 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 is tough on the broadband team to know that um. They're putting a lot of work into a system that still isn't quite coming up to par of what are what are what are uh citizens of Rio Blanco expect of us. And so we we wanna achieve that. And and I think these investments in in the system lets us do that and then it helps them be more efficient in how we serve the the system. Both for Semeron, who's doing a good job, but they're they're limited by our capabilities as our county network. And then on our side too, of what we can do better in in making sure we're good stewards of this.
Yeah, I think we're headed the right, the right way, it's it's uh, I I don't wanna drop it.
I would agree, I would agree with what you said, it's a it's a county asset and we need to make sure that the infrastructure is up to par where it needs to be. Help you guys on the ground, I know probably three years ago, I had a friend actually call me from Minnesota. Sorry, he moved since then, and said that we were actually listed as number four across the nation with best broadband. So that that was impactful for somebody from another state to see us on the map. And I, that's why I say, well, it's an asset to the county and we need to maintain it, and this is part of maintaining it, so.
I and I just look at it as for economic development, I mean it's important in kind of businesses that are trying to have in my own current system, so.
So do we need a motion on this to move forward? I know he's wanting something approved.
To allocate this.
So that that way we can.
To to keep moving.
Do you have any kind of a timeline?
Well, um so given the fact that uh the uh the Callex equipment based on our procurement policy is is through Callex. And I have the quote uh approved, uh you guys give me the motion and I'm gonna walk downstairs and execute on that purchase order. Uh and then we uh, and then uh we'll get that signed off. And uh and then there's about an eight to twelve week lead time on our equipment. And so we're shooting to have everything here and ready to go by the beginning of the summer. And then once we have everything that they use downstairs racked and stacked and ready to go, we will, we'll be starting deploying it this summer. And I hope to have a good chunk of it all completed um by the fourth quarter of this uh this year.
Can I, you guys, can I go over your figures one more time? Does the X X G on three hundred and six thousand five hundred and eight dollars?
Yes.
These switches are two hundred and twenty-six thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Yes.
For a total of five forty-three or thirty-three?
That's three thirty-three.
Three, five forty-three, three thirty-three?
No, five thirty-three.
Right, okay, that's that's the way that I had it in mind, you know, but I, you sense a difference.
Oh, I switched those numbers around.
So what's the total?
Go with mine or mine.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna double check.
One?
I have five thirty-three thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars.
That's the way I did it in my, okay, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve the X G S pond for three hundred and six thousand five hundred and eight dollars. And the switches, the new switches for two hundred and twenty-six thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. For a total of five hundred thirty, five hundred thirty-three thousand four hundred and thirty-three dollars. To uh get this project moving.
Second.
So a motion and a second, we've had plenty of discussion, Sean, will you please call the roll?
Overton?
Aye.
Oh, Heron, hi.
Scritchfield, aye. She wasn't ready for that.
Nope. Got it.
Motion passes, so move forward, now you're gonna be really, really busy.
It's always a great, um there is one last thing, a side note, uh this was just dropped off by uh Grand Junction Windwater. Um we uh, we were rated on, they gave us an award for the top five municipality of the year presented to Rio Blanco County. Um in recognition of partnership, um this has to do with our airport parfa water line. Um they were very appreciative on the project, they felt that it, you know, that um it did really well and they were really happy with us working. And they they brought some donuts up for downstairs, motion.
You bring us that.
I'm sorry, like usually I try to like space it out, but uh those guys were really happy, so.
Who is that from?
Windwater supplier of the Grand Junction.
Oh, okay, that's a supplier for the.
Good job.
Yeah, yeah, so um I thought that was kinda cool, they dropped it off this morning, I wasn't ready, they just called me up and said, hey, uh I'm out front, you got some donuts?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, that's, that's kinda cool, so.
Thank you.
Alright, well, thank you guys.
They remember we get Seminoles next time.
Alright. Alright, moving on to line item Q.
That you do.
No, that's me.
Okay.
I would consider uh. Madam Chairman, I make a motion to permit, for permission, letters for the Meeker Lions Club to provide beer, wine and liquor. On the Rio Blanco County property, however, following date, time and address. Number one is Colorado Lions West Annual Convention, March eighth, twenty twenty-five, from three P M to twelve A M. On March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, from three P M to twelve A M. And then Fairfield Center, two hundred Main Street, Meeker, Colorado, eight one six four one. The second one is Rio Rocky Mountain Elk Foundation banquet on April, April fifth, twenty twenty-five, from three to twelve A M, eight P M to A M. Rio Blanco County Four-Each Building, seven hundred, Sulphur Creek, Meeker, Colorado, eight one six four one. The third one is the Hope West Cornhole Tournament and Banquet, June seventh, twenty twenty-five, nine A M to twelve A M. At the Rio Blanco County Four-Each Building, seven hundred, Sulphur Creek, Meeker, Colorado, eight one six four one.
And I would second, so I have a motion and a second, do either, do you have any questions?
No.
Sean, will you please call the roll?
Scritchfield, aye.
Overton?
Aye.
Oh, here, aye.
You've already done one.
So moving on to um line item S, which is consideration of legislative bills. Um we have one here that's um Senate Bill twenty-five dash one four nine concerning measures affecting equestrians. So um, oh darn it, I just lost it. I had um actually talked to um to Leif about this bill and he gave me some really good talking points, so I'm gonna use them. Um this, the bill is wanting to enhance the safety and the infrastructure for e- equestrians. In suburban and urban areas by defining equestrian zones and outlining specific responsibilities for local governments. And so I think what they're they're wanting, in a nutshell, they want the local government's re- responsibilities. Um like they will have to conduct and maintain the infrastructure for horse trails. Um installing signs, notifying the public of this infrastructure, um erect uh road signs. Um the other thing is motorist requirements, so there's also some motorist requirements on this. Um and they're they're telling us that um like you can't exceed ten miles per hour when you're passing an equestrian. Um you need to maintain a distance, so when you're in your vehicle, you need to maintain a distance of at least six feet from an equestrian. Um and so that's, that's kind of this bill a little bit in a nutshell. Um and I think that what we're, you know, I guess what I'm wanting is, do we, are we supporting it, are we opposing it? Wanting to amend it, what what is the board of county commissioners thinking on this?
I wanna oppose it a lot. We're getting way too much of this stuff, and it's just ridiculous what it's gonna take, that's another unfunded. And it's just, I don't think there's that much support for it out there, I think we, they they just, five hundred bills and here it is, good for yield.
And I just look at it, where's the personal responsibility? If you're horseback, you need just be careful. Um I don't think the counties or the municipalities need to stand this cost, so I would, I would move that we.
I'm sorry.
Do you wanna add anything else that maybe I missed? It would, I think, you know, it's gonna impact road bridge um with the signs and cost the county the signs. Um so, yeah, I would agree that opposing it is is definitely where Rio Blanco needs to be. You have something further?
I I don't, it just, the crux of it is it will fall on road bridge to for signage um in maintenance of access to the trailheads according to the the bill that's written. So it's an added cost, an added burden, among the other things that you both said in this interview, sir.
Unfunded mandates, which we love. Um so would you please call the roll on that?
Sure. Overton?
Aye.
Scritchfield?
Aye.
Oh, Heron?
Aye.
Same deal.
Sure.
Um moving on to line item T.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we send a letter of support to the Rio Blanco county, Rio Blanco County constituents. Let me start that over. Make a motion that we read a letter to the Rio Blanco County constituents and livestock producers. Supporting the partnership between the Rio Blanco County Sheriff and the annual and the Animal and Plant Health Inspection Services. Of the USDA deputizing Justin Ewing, allowing him to serve as a county animal and livestock conflict investigator.
Second. So a motion and a second, and um so earlier today, um Justin Ewing was sworn in and deputized. Um for this position and um the county commissioners wrote a letter and so I'm gonna. And deputized, um, for this position, and, um, the county commissioners wrote a letter, and so I'm gonna read the letter. Um. And, so I'm gonna read it now. To the livestock producers and residents of Rio Blanco County. The Board of County Commissioners of Rio Blanco County, Colorado, recognizes the challenges posed by the introduction of wolves. Into our region and the potential impacts on our local livestock producers, wildlife, and way of life. We are committed to ensuring transparency, fairness, and effective support for those affected by this transition. First and foremost, we want to acknowledge the efforts of our local Colorado Parks and Wildlife CPW officers. While we understand the concerns raised by many in our community, we believe that our local CPW officers are working diligently. As they are permitted under the state regulations and state leadership. They face significant challenges in balancing wildlife management with the interests of our agricultural community. And we appreciate their commitment to our county. Second, Rio Blanco County is taking proactive steps to support our livestock producers. Who are directly impacted by these changes. As part of this effort, we are partnered with Animal and Plant Health Inspection Services, APHIS Wildlife Service. To ensure that a trusted and knowledgeable third party is available to assist in livestock conflict investigations. To strengthen this collaboration, the APHIS agent, agent, Justin Ewing is, will be deputized. As a Rio Blanco County Sheriff's Deputy, allowing him to serve as the Animal and Livestock Conflict Investigator. His experience with wildlife deprivation and understanding of our local landscape. Will make him a valuable resource in addressing conflicts fairly and effectively. Finally, we believe that the decision to uphold Rio Blanco County Sheriff's Office and deprivation site visits should rest. With the affected livestock producer. If a livestock producer wishes to include a county deputy as resource during the CPW investigation. They should directly contact Justin Ewing at nine seven zero, three one nine, zero eight, seven zero. Or by email, justin dot F dot Ewing, and his last name spelled E W I N G. At APHIS, A P H I S, dot USDA, dot G O V. Or call the Rio Blanco County Sheriff's Office at nine seven zero, eight seven eight, nine six six zero. This approach ensures the land, that landowners retain control over their own response while. Also allowing them access to additional support if they so choose. We, we remain committed to advocating for the best interests of our community. And working collaboratively, collaboratively with state and federal partners. Please do not hesitate to reach out to our office with any questions or concerns. Anything else, guys wanna add?
No, I'm just happy that we have, have Justin as that resource, and think it's a good plan.
Great. Sean, will you please call the roll?
O'Hara?
Aye.
Overton?
Aye.
Scritchfield?
Aye.
Um, so now we are going to recess as the Board of County Commissioners. And convene as the Board of Social Services to get a report from Carmen McKay. As the Director for Department of Human Services. You're up.
No, I just.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, um. I didn't know for sure, you guys wanted to start with, like, the adoption, the adoptions of these, if you guys have questions, uh.
Just some overall, I guess what I was looking for is. You know, where, where's your budget at, where, where's some of the statistics as far as cases?
Oh, okay. So, um, overall, we're doing pretty good. Um, our budget is, okay, we're working with the finance officers to make sure some things are straightened out, but everything happens, okay. Um, I did hand you guys the core information, so when you guys have questions, are you ready to leave, we go, that we can. Just so you know what's all involved within core. Um, there's a lot more information that I thought those would kind of be more helpful for you all. And as far as, like, um, case loads, right now with eligibility, we're about, um. Three thousand plus, um, as far as cases go. Um, and that is, um, as far as active case loads currently.
Is that three thousand?
Yeah, uh, three thousand plus. If I count, two, three, four.
Wow.
More like. Five thousand. Cases currently. And that's active cases.
Is that, uh, up or down?
It's five thousand total right now.
I know, but is that, is that about what you do, is it more?
It's more, it's increased quite a bit.
How much?
Um, I would say about, usually, when we would report, when I remember, it's about, uh, three to four thousand cases. Um, right now, I would say it's about five thousand cases. And that, we're seeing that, and I can go into that more with some questions around Medicaid.
So the, so when you're talking eligibility, you're talking like. Medicaid cash assistance. Now?
Yes.
Okay. And, and when you say that they're up, are you talking like within the last year? The last couple of years, like, how many years would you say, or a year?
Um, probably within the last year since.
Are some of these cases with the same person people? Could there be two cases on the same person?
So you can have one person, you come into the office and apply for multiple programs.
Yeah, because I'm thinking we got sixty-five hundred people in the county, and we got five thousand cases.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, and this is a report that I just had in school, so, you know, we have to, yeah. Kinda see what that is, I just pulled it this morning, so I didn't really, you know.
So, do you have a way of pulling how many people that is versus number of cases?
Not, no, because the way we pull it, and I can kinda show you what I, what we see. So basically, when we pull it, we have, um.
So while we're waiting for that, do you guys have any questions so far? Um, what is your case loads like with child welfare, I mean, where are the base setting?
So right now, we have, um, eight, eight kiddos, um, emplacement, and two hopefully closing soon. And then, um. Yeah, so that's kind of what we're sitting at this, uh, changing soon to depending, because they have four things.
And with those eight emplacement, um. Do you know the, the number, how much it's costing us for foster care?
So right now, that's around, I would say eleven thousand. Um, but you've gotta remember, it's per a daily rate, so it depends on how many days. So it fluctuates, and then we'll hopefully, like I said, also look to potentially closing, and then. When they hit the age of eighteen, they may or may not close, so, yeah.
And you're saying eleven thousand per kid, per day, or mean, per month? Or eleven thousand dollars total?
Eleven thousand.
For the month, for the month, okay.
And sorry, I don't know the link, oh, when you say closing, what are we meaning, kids going into care, or kids going out of care?
That means that we close our case with them, but then, that's why I kinda brought these as well. So it's kind of a little bit helpful, so if they close and get adopted out, um. I just thought this might help, be helpful if you guys had any questions, especially in the eighteen-year-olds. If they're, um, eighteen. They're eighteen, this, this is like the worksheet. That we go through to see if they will continue and get extended, they have to meet certain criteria in there. So right now, when we have kids placed. So if it gets extended, then we practically continue, and so that's why sometimes we can't really answer, you know, like. When it's gonna end.
For sure, someone asked me, what does it mean when you're saying close? Or, let's see, what was the term she used, when you have two?
That potential will close, either they can be adopted out, or we can end the case with that. Depends on how we close it, that's why with that form right there, the adoption negotiation sheet. We, if they get adopted, then we actually have.
So they don't necessarily close on the case?
Yeah.
Because they're, um, still entitled to four E, federal funding, as well as county also. Sometimes you first a subsidy, um, with county only dollars, just because it might be more fiscally responsible for the county. Them being adopted versus continued care in foster care. So that, usually that number's higher when they're in foster than when they are adopted out. So a question that I have, talking about four E funding. Are you hearing anything at the federal level on where, what that's gonna look like on top of? There is a bill right now out there at the state level, that they are starting to talk about, and I, I haven't checked on the bill lately. But they're talking about starting to take social security money and not allowing extra care. And only, and it, it goes into a trust fund for a kid, which would really impact the counties. So two part, I mean, one, so with, if that bill was to go through, how many? How many kids do we have that are on social security that is helping foster care, do you know that number?
Not right off, no.
Okay, and then what are you hearing about four E?
So four E, are you talking about SB twenty-five twelve? The seventy-one?
Yes.
So that one, from what I'm hearing, um, they don't think, um. Because they can't collect on social security and four E, that it, even if it passes. We can't collect on those two, but we don't know right now, because it's still in conversation. Cause I tried to look even at my notes to see if there was any updates, but we really haven't gotten any updates on that one.
Okay, and then the federal, what are you hearing about federal funding on that?
We just, we don't know, we still, it's still in, intermixed with that in the Medicaid. There hasn't been anything updated.
Okay.
So if they, we do say, you know, back to both of those.
And then, at that point, because we've made negotiations on that adoption. Is it gonna become county only dollars if that, if that gets decreased?
See, they're not, they haven't even, like, said anything, that's what's, I think, it's for shady for all counties across the state, because we don't know.
So, how many cases do you guys have of child welfare total?
Hmm, I know, open. Total, I think we have. I know Cal's got seven right now, and then. Um, I don't know if that's, and that's part of the eight that are, that we talked about, so I think that's like within that eight. Ten kind of open, cause you know how it is when you're trying to transition, it's kind of maybe hard to explain, yeah, the closure. Um, because there's so many things that come into it, you know, because you have to sit with courts, you have to do. Your plans and all of that stuff, so I would say ten right now.
Okay, and so, let's say a kiddo gets returned home. The case doesn't close at that point? Because you're still working with the family to maintain them home. As well as, and there's that other version of adoption, or they went to a camp placement, so. There's just so many different scenarios unfortunately, but, so in case you for it to truly close. It takes a while, but even when a kiddo's returned home, so, it still can be another six months, sometimes a year. Um, just maintaining, to make sure that that kid stays safe in that home, just depends on the situation. Cause they have a treatment, they have to work, the family has to work, and it's, it's a family treatment. Yeah. Okay, so, um, the other thing that I am wondering about, or have been wondering about. You may not have this number today, but in the future, when you come to us for the Board of Social Services. I wanna know how much money is coming in from Medicaid.
Oh, okay.
To the hospitals. So, I used to have to re, well, to the county as a whole, but I used to have to report that number. To, to the board, when I was a director, and it was always interesting to see how much Medicaid dollars came into our county. And what that looks like, and so, in anticipation, as you and I have discussed a few times, Medicaid potentially. I, I see it, I, I see part of it being reduced, that funding at the federal level. I think we are all anticipating that at this point, how that looks or what that looks like, we don't know.
Yeah.
Um, and so I just would like to start see, watching those trends to see what that looks like. Because I know Rangeli District Hospital, if I remember correctly, when I asked, um, Kyle Rinn. Uh, how much of his budget was Medicaid, it was over eighty percent of their budget is Medicaid, and I don't know what Pioneers is. Anticipating is probably about the same, maybe not completely, um, because they have, you know, specialists and so on and so forth. A little bit differently than, uh, Rangeli District Hospital, so. That, that is concerning for them, because it's gonna impact them, especially if that's the majority of their. I mean, it, it's a mix between Medicaid and Medicare, and so, um, don't know what's gonna happen with either one of those. Do you guys have any other questions? Alright, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty. So, we are adjourning as the Board of Social Services. Um, at one thirty-seven, coming back and reconvening as the Board of County Commissioners. And we are on to resolutions, so, um, line item A.
Madam Chair, I would move consideration of resolution twenty twenty-five oh nine. Resolution, Board of County Commissioners of Rio Blanco County, Colorado, establishing a revised policy. Curement of goods and services by county departments. Update adds the following, department directors are only authorized to make I T equipment, software, and service. Services purchases with the approval of the I T department. The I D, I T department maintains the budget for all I T systems. To ensure compatibility, security, cost effectiveness, and legal compliance with applicable regulations. Including but not limited to two CFR. Two zero zero, two one six, and Colorado House Bill twenty-one, eleven ten.
I'll second that.
So I have a motion and a second, um, Vicki, do you wanna give us a little bit of background on, on why this came about?
Um, this came about because, um, basically what we, historically before. There was really the, the structure that we have now. Um, if I wanted to get a computer program that I was gonna utilize, I would just sign up for a credit card and go get it. Um, now with a couple of different players in that fact, that if it's something that is going to be pushed out to the public. Or even on the backside, we've gotta make sure it meets the minimum ADA standards under WK two point two. Um, we also have to make sure that it's within our security protocols. And so it kind of, it basically clarifies that in the procurement policy, in order to have. A piece of computer equipment that we're gonna add onto the network, if we're gonna add a software program onto the network or onto like your individual computers. That that be coordinated through the IT department. Now, the IT, you have to make the case basically to the IT department, they're gonna look at that, they're gonna analyze that for a risk. Is there, you know, does this meet the minimum requirements? And so again, it kind of takes, because of these new requirements, especially for security purposes. And things like that, we need to do some due diligence rather than just saying, hey, I found this really cool app, and I'm just gonna put it on the county website. So it doesn't say that the IT department can't necessarily categorically say, no, you're never gonna get that. It's that allows them to do their due diligence. Now, maybe there's another program that's safer or meets the expectations. With a lot of the vendors that we have, we are right now, because of, on our ADA, um. Our ADA plan, we have to reach out to every single vendor and make sure that they can provide us with a certificate. That shows how they're in compliance with meeting Colorado's laws. There's a certificate that they have to give us. That tracking mechanism, we've got to have control of that somewhere, and that's what this is.
It also saves us some money. Because they, they buy something that we already have somewhere in the county. It's just a lot of people going different directions.
Right, and we could duplicate, when you can sometimes get a group pricing rather than saying, I need this, and I go out and I get that. And then you go out and get the same thing, or then you go out and get one similar, you know, by making sure that we're on the same page with everything. That's what this procurement policy is, is to kind of refine that process so that we aren't going out in different directions. And that we are getting things that are both from an ADA accessibility standpoint and from a security standpoint.
Some technology that isn't fifteen year old.
Mm-hmm.
With security risks.
Right, opens a back door basically to the server.
Does this impact, you know, like I know curtain recorders and human services have, have certain, certain. Product or whatever machines, whatever you wanna call it, that the state requires them to have. That they, you know, they don't get a choice really, um.
They don't, but we still need to coordinate that with IT so that they have that on that list.
Always do for sure.
If there's a breach or something, we can track it back to specific things, so again, it's, it's more of, so like if Sean went out and got thirty pieces of equipment that IT didn't know about. There, your risk is just significantly increased, plus we don't know that that's there. And so again, this really kind of funnels that and says, let's make sure that we've got whatever it is. And if it's something the state requires and it doesn't have those security protocols, we're making note of that. In those files, now, I don't know that that's ever been a situation or a case, but again, it, it comes back to making sure that. We have kind of central repository of software, hardware, that kind of thing, and IT is your best bet to do that.
So has that conversation happened with department heads to make sure that they are following? Especially now that we've got it written out in the policy, um, as long as it gets approved today. Um, have those conversations happen with those department heads to make sure?
Not in advance of this, we wanna make sure that the board is on board with that. Um, so if you get, if this is approved, then we will send out a formal. And again, the procurement policy is pretty clear, it just was missing this piece that.
I think unofficially they have tried to work with them, but they, they're not having any success, so they're going this direction. They need some help.
That's why I wanted to make sure, we mentioned that, that, that they're, they're being involved in those conversations. Maybe all, all the time happening, so.
And also to make sure that the department has some machine that they need to do, I mean, that's.
Why?
That's big, most generally, we do, because we don't know what we're talking about when we're ordering stuff. You know, there's a certain drive we have to have for a printer to work with the program we have an hour of this, so, yeah. Both of them to make sure that, because I always feel like I'm bugging them. Like, I have to get this, is this what I need to get or what, and they actually want to hear it, because they wanna make sure it's right. You don't wanna spend money and have a problem.
Will you please call the real Sean?
Oh, Erin?
I.
Script you.
I.
Over to.
Alright.
Motion passes, uh, we don't have any public hearings, so other business? It's gonna be, oh my god, it's all the road and footage update. That has been in the back row all day.
So is Jared from the newspaper too?
Well, Jared was last to be around here.
But thanks for having you here with us.
So, we've been fixing some cattle yards, um, in both Rangeli and Baker. Um, replacing some culverts where we have the weather to do that. Um, in Rangeli, we're working on our kids getting some material ready for the summer, and they're also. Getting ready for MAG, which will start down there on the twenty-fourth. We did do a. Test for gravel pit, uh, County Route seventy-three there just built the bridge. Uh, went in and dug a bunch of holes and actually never found gravel, that was one of the spots that we recommended look for putting the gravel pit in, so. Uh, it was a no bill. Um, we've been, huh, home and flood material down the County Route sixty-eight and seventy-six just getting summer. Flood's cleaned up till we've had, uh, during mud season, you tend to get caught up on some things. Um, we did repair the Burke Bridge, um, we went on, can't work, went under. And got some of those repairs done, so I think we'll be good on that for a little bit hopefully. Um, got all of our inshore classes done, and been repairing its guard rail. Um, County Route seventeen, still moving forward with trying to figure out what we wanna do with the bridge. If you guys are wanting to spend money this year, we could look at trying to replace that with. Outgoing through the state funding, or if we do go through with state funding, that's gonna take us a couple years to get it done. It's just to do the design, it's about four months out with going through the state process. Um, Vicki asked me to put together some different ideas for some money, we ended up with some. Um, one thing that was suggested was bleachers for the paragons, uh, that way we aren't using anyone else's. They would, if we were to do that, we should keep all their bleachers out. You part, and then we would have our own bleachers that also cover, uh, the ADA bleachers that we have over here. So it basically, everything that's over there, that's there as we would move, and then we would get new bleachers and cover the ADA bleachers and everything. Um, that's about a hundred and twelve thousand dollars for that. Um, I would like to redo the gutters on both four H and the indoor arena. Uh, we have some icing problems and some leaks, so it would be nice to get taken care of. Um, that total cost would be a little over eleven thousand dollars on that. And. I printed all this out, but they make it over here with me, so, um. He would like to do, um, a heater on the indoor arena, they've been asking, we try to figure out a way to keep it above freezing in there. That would be one that would be a little bit of a challenge to. You'd have to put it in there, basically limit the controls to where. No one could touch it, and it would just start heating at around thirty-four degrees and shut off it. Thirty-six degree or something like that, just enough to keep it above freezing in there, was one of the requests we had. A lot of people to use it in the wear.
A lot of air leaks too, a lot of air leaks.
Yeah, there's a lot of leaks in that, um.
So what would that, have you got a cost on that?
For the heaters, um. It would be about. Fifty thousand dollars, what I came up with for that. We also have a heater that's out in the four H building, and that would be a fifty thousand dollar fix too, so. Total cost for the heaters was a hundred thousand dollars. And then we s, do need nine commercial toilets, that's what. You have a plumber come out, go through everything, we, uh, cameraed the sewer out there, and there doesn't seem to be anything wrong with the sewer, they came back. The fact that we need commercial grade toilets, that might help with the, everything being plugged up when we have big events, um. And that ends up being about twenty-six hundred nineteen dollars without someone installing them. I think we might be able to install ourselves.
Twenty-six hundred?
Yep. Yeah, they're two hundred ninety-one dollars a piece. Love that.
So is that not something that's already in the budget that we can just get done?
It was not in the budget. Which is fine, I mean, we've got contingency, we've also got the LATCF funds. We can do a supplemental or an additional we need to do over time. These are not projects that we're including in the twenty twenty-five.
Um, I am in the process of trying to get a consultant onboard, to be able to help with all of the bridges that we're trying to do. Um, so I would like to actually, I'll give it the web to get r- rich designed too, um. So if we could get a consultant that could help us with the grant paperwork and all the CDO processes and everything, I think that would be beneficial. I don't think we have enough for a full-time engineer. Someone that could help us through all the different aspects of this and liabilities and everything, I think would be extremely beneficial.
And engineering we did have included in the seventeen and five, right, as far as the twenty-five?
Yes, we did. Um, so we, with County Route seventeen, we do have a grant, so, um. Got a grant for two hundred and fifty thousand, then with our magic makes it three hundred and twelve thousand for design of County Route seventeen. And I had a hundred and sixty-nine thousand that we put into design on County Route five there for a bridge. I don't honestly think it'll take that much for design on that one. Where we're looking to try to do a box culvert, basically, um, a contact box or something along those lines. Um, but. And I know there's gonna, if we do something like that, they're gonna have to do some soil studies and things like that to be certain it's suitable for what we're wanting to do, so.
How much time did you buy some County Route five return room? Have you got anybody to look at that yet?
They haven't, they, they said they would come back out, pre-inspect, but I am betting that. Couple of years probably. Um, but that's hard, hard to say without looking at that, at least a couple of years on it. Uh, can't get a good job when in there, fixed everything, we got the asphalt fixed on top, um. Yeah, hopefully. But that one would qualify for a dollar grant very easily, because it's County Route five, um, and dollar grants aren't that hard, so. Still waiting to hear about seventy-seven, they're supposed to be getting back to us here in a few days to let us know where they're at with that too, so.
The heaters. Um, are all of the heaters bad in the four H building, do they all figure?
No, just one whole section is bad.
That's fifty thousand dollars.
That's what he was able to come up with for a cost is fifty thousand bucks.
Radiant.
Right, yeah. And it basically is rusted out from the water coming in the center, so it's rusted out, so you're not gonna replace that whole thing. I don't, I don't know if those are the most efficient or what, but. I thought the old style that set the corner of blue air worked good, they didn't seem to have that many problems, I thought they might have had noise here.
Yeah, noise becomes a real issue in those kind of buildings.
Especially when you're doing cleaning or something.
So I guess, something can, moisture coming in, so is the roof bad? Why are we got moisture coming inside?
Um, the roof is not bad on four H, on the indoor arena, yes, um. I don't know why there was moisture in the heaters. I know they have an outside vent that goes outside, I don't know why there was moisture in the heaters, it could have been condensation, I don't know.
They, 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 those kinda heaters bring air in from the outside, and if they are outside, and so. If their, if their stacks aren't done correctly, they can just bring out. Um. I, the bathrooms up there, I've always wondered, or have wondered in the past, why we don't get those fixed?
And that's what he's been trying to do, uh, because we did, did just shut them down, keep from having issues. I worked actually really well, we should have issues.
Well, that's.
That's not.
So he went through and did everything with the plumber, and that's what they came back and recommended is that we just. Replace those toilets with an industrial toilet, that they have a little bit more pressure to move things through. That's all the plumber came back with, so.
So I get, I guess I'm not, so are we talking about what we think are priorities? You just, so you said that if, if there was money available, we could do X, Y, and Z. Is that what I'm hearing?
Two point, two point three million you guys have, I don't remember what the correct fund was, but.
Okay, so I guess. Just thinking out loud here, which is dangerous just to the record. I'm thinking the toilets, let's just get them done. That's crazy, and not only that much of money, so let's get those done. Um, I don't care, you know, but the bleachers, help me understand why we think we need to buy bleachers if we have use of the others.
So we have to transport them out back over here, and when you're transporting the bleachers, they're aluminum, they, they take a little bit of a beating. We switched from moving on with tractors and everything to loading them on the load weight, taking them out and doing it that way. Which has helped eliminate some of the damage, but just. We still get some damage, you know, but we are bleachers, I would not worry about this belonging to someone else and using it and everything else, so.
Well, and, and I get that, I guess the other question is, can they store them out there? I mean, that would be another question we wanna ask them more, but they still need the county to store them, so that's something I would.
I, I don't wanna keep storing them if we weren't using them, but, yeah.
But if they can't store them out there, that's a pretty good partnership that we, we work with them to do that. I guess I'm just thinking, and I get that, and I, I do because it's some damage or whatever, and I don't know where or what or where, but. Um, I guess I'm not as excited about the bleachers and that, that nuts could be a lower priority for me, um. I guess those, that's my initial thoughts.
I, uh, I, I don't like bleachers, uh, I think that's still to be by, if we got. It's just, unless you can come up with a better reason to do that. Um, the gutters, I, I, I've seen those gutters that need replaced.
Yes, it is.
Needs to be done, and the toilets, the, the bathrooms need to be taken care of, and that's just silly that we're shutting them down. And the heater, the heater in the, uh, four H or the, uh, indoor arena. You got the heater, what do you do with the gas? That's gonna cost quite a bit. It's gonna up your budget quite a bit.
Yeah, I, yeah, I know, and that's, like I said, that's one of the things. Because the building itself isn't super insulated or anything else, so. You know, it would be something like just have it turn on when they were using it, turn it off, or what? No, it would be a cost for the heater, it'd be a cost for the gas, and that's a big building for the gas. It's just something that several people have mentioned, and I thought I'd ask you guys about it.
And the four H really heaters in the building, I, I wish you could get an estimate for that, I think you're way high.
That's, we're trying, he.
And the, uh, and in that estimate, you might talk to somebody that deals with that stuff and see if there's a better system that isn't so noisy. That it's, uh, you know, that's more compatible with where we use the building. Uh, there may not be.
No, those aren't horribly noisy until the bat kicks on. You know, one of them in the, one of the exit halls is pretty noisy. You know, one of them in the, one of the exit halls is pretty noisy when the fan kicks on. That's what, we have them come in to try to do the maintenance, but they were rusted through into these spots, so that was their recommendation is the replacement.
The bleachers that we have now, are they ADA compliant?
One of them, and then we would put them out there and then we toast them, because there's no shade over that one.
And is that what you're wanting to replace on the bleachers? Is is having it be ADA or?
I would like to use the one that is ADA, I would like to, if we're users, I'd like to get a cover over. Where when people are out there, they aren't just getting roasted all day. And if we're gonna buy one, um, if we if we're to buy one bleacher and be able to cover it, the ADA one's about fifteen thousand dollars if you do a cover over.
Where are you gonna use it? Where are you gonna use the bleachers?
On the fairgrounds.
Where at?
Where they're set up right now. We use them.
Close building across the, from the main grandstands.
All those bleachers out there, I guess are not ours. The fairgrounds comes with a little bit of a mystery of who belongs to what, so it's been a.
Well, I I guess I'm, I can't see where you're using them. Uh, the uh, the grandstands got seating all over the place. Bleachers, I s- I think I've seen them between the CSU building and the uh grandstands, is that where you're using? Are you using them over on the oval? Where are you using those?
There, we have some at the end of the grandstands there. Um, then the ADA one, and then they use some of them for uh the concert, when they do the concert. Bleachers were something that was thrown out there, so I got a price for it as well.
And bleachers themselves, the the existing stadium, the red, that's not ADA accessible. There's, we need stairs, only way upstairs stairs, right?
We just have the one place for them set up there.
And it's not covered.
But there's an ADA, we're gonna go right there.
So I need to throw, we've been talking about expenses and support, but just something that I heard from multiple places when I was campaigning, the concern that there is not um wheelchair accessibility to the grandstands. And without, and so when we do the bleachers or whatever, there's no cover kind of thing, so we just need to be thinking about that, and I know that can get more expensive real quickly.
Well, that's why, that's why we looked at the bleachers was because of you. Was to try to get some of them recovered and that was, the ADA would be covered if we were to purchase this, otherwise I don't know how you would, I don't think you can fix our grandstands to be ADA compliant, so.
So I think if you got, but I, so I think that there's value in like one set of bleachers for that, I don't think you need to get a whole set of bleachers. Ten or fifteen.
That would be about fifteen thousand bucks if we were buying our own bleacher and cover it. If you're gonna cover, but I would like for it to stay there so you're not moving it.
Yeah, it'd be hard to move it, although they could use somehow their cover too, but that's a, but move in a cover, I guess, yeah, so.
So, did one of the This is gonna be hard. Didn't want to say thank you. This will be my last meeting.
Congratulations, yeah, congratulations.
It was your last day. The twentieth.
Of twenty thirty.
I think we haven't set up really well for for it to keep moving forward on us. Got a good team. And I think it'll, I think it'll be good.
We'll be working together on that.
Well, Scott, I can say that I have really enjoyed working with you. You have been very pivotal in in many projects, even outside of your own department. Um, you're always willing to help any other department, anybody for that matter. When they maybe brought up something, you always have um ideas, resolutions of ways we can fix things, again, even outside of rural bridge. And I have truly, truly appreciated that interview and getting your input. Um, you're gonna be missed, you're gonna be, we're we're gonna have a hole, and your shoes are gonna be hard to fill. Um, so I just want you to know that I have really appreciated working with you and hopefully we can still continue to work together on some level. You would just be in the neighboring county, so um, I I just want you to know that and stay in contact, please.
Definitely, thank you. And Vicky's been amazing to work with, it's been awesome having her on, it's been a massive help. Like I say, I think you have a great team and we have rural bridge, I think, set up. Where it's gonna actually do really, really well, so. And Antina is amazing. She's been extremely, extremely great out there, so. Will help with whatever, as long as need be, but I I do wanna work on trying to get a consultant on so that we can move forward with some bridges. Have someone can help us with that, maybe with Vicky tomorrow on all that, so we're still trying to move forward. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks, and it's worked with you very long, but appreciate it. How long have we been with the county?
Four years.
Thank you.
Thanks for your service.
I'll fix some of those YouTube videos.
And the closed caption won't be after.
I know. The mumbling is stuck in hell.
All right, moving on to county administrator update.
Um, so I emailed you my update, um, I believe you probably got received that.
Vicky, can you email it to me too?
Mm-hmm.
Can I have that as well?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so just to touch on a few things, um, I was accepted into the CU Denver Certified Public Manager Program. Um, so I'm, would like to proceed with that part of it, it's um, and I can fund this out of my own pocket, but what was built into my contract for the administrator salary was for me to obtain my masters in public administration. Um, what I would contemplate is that this be backed out of those funds, so that as I if I do go for the masters, um, that you, the county is not responsible for that portion of it. So whatever I use towards getting this degree is about three thousand dollars. Um, I think it's well worth it in talking to the folks that I did at the conference that I went to, so many of them have gone this route and it does give you a much stronger basis for immediate access and immediate use rather than going to the end of your N B A. If you guys said no, you're only considering uh the contract agreement for the N B A, that's fine. I'm gonna consider, uh, go for this option first to give me that strong of a background. Um, and that will hopefully help expedite that um N B A. Um, along with that, this conference that I went to was so enlightening, um, there were so many things that we did. Uh, one was to tour the National Renewable Energy Lab in Denver, um. Pretty incredible thing that they have through the um Department of Energy. And they're federally funded and and they get to private entities that you wanna develop something, you can come in and they help you test it and set up the lab for it and things like that. And I would like to maybe think of if there's any alternative solutions we can possibly do coal. Or again, they're saying renewable energy, but they kind of focus just on solar is a lot of it. Um, or some of the other things that they do is um the geothermal heating and things like that, but uh, they do not do nuclear at this place, at this lab. But they basically are one of those things, and I don't know what their federal funding will look like going forward. Um, but it is a testing site and and they open it up and say, if you've got an idea, if there's someone wants to try something out, they can help you pull the team together to do the testing. Um, I highly encourage if you're in Denver to contact them to do a tour of it. Um, wow, it's just, it's pretty incredible. Um, couple, I listed the classes that I attended. Um, one of the classes, of course, that we talked about that I already, I called you as soon as I got out of it, was the navigating executive orders and impacts on policy shifts. That is the one where we were learning first time that now Doge has not gotten to there, they've not said anything, but the possible clawback of COVID funds, including the L A T C F and that being and right now it looks the way most people were talking, um, that Senator Bennett's office, I believe it was, yeah, Senator Bennett's office had mentioned. They had not heard anything except for if you weren't current on your reporting. We are current on all our reporting for both S L F R F and L A T C F. Um, but we do have unspent funds in L A T C F, and that was the other thing that could, that was looking at, should those funds be clawed back? You know, where would we stand? And and um, so that's just kind of a a thing to keep in mind, and that's why we brought these extra projects to you to say, is there anything that you could budget it for or that you would like to see done? Where, again, we don't wanna waste our funds, they are currently sitting there, but would we rather spend or utilize those funds in the county or let those go back to the federal government, should they do it while that? There is no discussion yet at that, at the federal level, it's a hypothetical. Um, one of the really neat ones that we went to was AI innovations to enhance government efficiency. One of the companies that presented, they actually go into the counties or towns, municipalities, and they take all of your documents, your digital documents, and they create a server or lack of better word is server, they compile all your P D S into one secure network or thing, well, and you can use that same way that you can use chat G P T. Now chat G P T goes out and looks everything public worldwide, it's gonna look for documents and things like that. This particular um technology would put borders on that that says only look at stuff within Rio Blanco County. So for instance, I could ask, tell me all the times that we've talked about O H V regulations. And it would look through your permission minutes, it would look through resolutions, it would look through ordinances, it would look through anything that had that terminology within our bucket. It's not accessible to anyone externally, it is truly just within these walls that you could ask it a question and say, you know, I'm looking for a ninety or twenty nineteen eighty resolution on planning. It again would come back and look specifically for that within Rio Blanco County laws. You can't ask it to go out and pull other information, you could say, I want you to pull anything that's been in the federal times and my county resources, and it will give you that information. It was really kind of crazy what that did, it was pretty, pretty cool to watch.
So Vicky, I've also, when at the district, we were looking into that and they say that that will really, really help on writing grants. It's got your information already, you just ask it the question and it pulls everything from previous grants and other things, that basically.
And they estimated that it saves, it would save at least uh for any particular project, at least five hours. Uh, so if you're writing a grant, that exact thing, I mean, it was just amazing what you could ask it to do, and again, it, the borders are on. It only can look at this information and give you that information, but then you, it's a lot easier to verify too, because I could look, oh hey Sean, I've got this resolution, I just wanna make sure that it's correct, and yeah, it's right there, there's, you know, so it's pretty incredible technology. Of course, it comes at a cost. Uh, attended some succession planning and workforce development and strategic planning for small communities. That was pretty incredible, um, that was, they did uh Gunson County, who was actually um owns and has purchased property in the county property in in the outline areas. And they are building their own uh condominiums or apartment complexes and running that as an inter- enterprise fund um to solve their housing needs. Now that's something, but I mean, I was, it was very interesting the way that they, that came to fruition. And so now it is paying back, they're not having to put county funds into that, it's all maintenance and upkeep is now being provided by the renters who they have. So that was very interesting. Uh, with that, with that strategic planning piece, um, I had talked to a couple different people about, you know, how did their strategic planning go, how did they get to that point? And they said they did, uh, the one from Gunson County did have a professional company that came in and helped them design their strategic plan. Um, we have the software, um, but I am struggling on getting, making sure that the plan is cohesive. And and that's what I'm concerned about, is I don't know that the information that we've got through so far year to date, we started looking at that, that it is cohesive and that it is gonna stand that test of time. Um, and possibly, uh, one of the conversations I had with Lisa Jones, uh, Dr. Jones out at C N C C was they said Kelly Scott had helped them uh drive their plan several times. And looking at the possibility that maybe she would come in and assist me with that, assist us maybe do a a meeting where she kind of helps us drill down to make sure we do have a a strong plan that will stand that test of time. And not just something that's for this year, but you know, the five years down the road. Um, then the Gunson County uh administrator also said that he would send me the name of a professional company that they use that they, and they continue to use um each year when they do their strategic planning. Similar to what was in the, um, I had sent you some information some time ago about the training we'll be having on April twenty eighth, our uh leadership training. That gentleman also does strategic planning and and every year he goes into a meeting with Adams County. Adams or Rep, I forget, remember his name, and before their budget season, he sits down and they help, he helps them identify what this budget season's gonna look like. So anyways, there's some options out there, um, but I am struggling to try and make sure that that is accurate as possible after having gone to this, a lot of seminars there. Um, I just wanna make sure that we're getting the best bang for the buck and we're creating a good strategic plan. So, um, I already touched on our website and document mediation, um. We do have updated the digital accessibility plan, that's our plan that says how do we make progress every quarter. That is a plan that's through the ADA, it's not a, um, the commissioners don't have to approve that plan, it is truly just what steps are we going to take and here's where we're at, here's what we've done so far. Um, similar to your finance policies, they're not necessarily commissioner driven um type of policies, more internal. But anytime you wanna see that, I'd be glad to provide it to you. Um, that would converge accessibility, and at the end of March, I'm hoping it'll be by the end of March, we'll be testing our, the forward facing Rio Blanco County website pages, done a lot of work on it, we just need to see where we're at. Um, personnel staffing, so just wanna make sure, give you a shout out to some new folks that we hired since the last meeting uh here in Meeker. Uh, we have uh Haley Kraft actually just moved from DHS to public health. Um, Mary Anne McCoy went from administrative assistant, assistant eligibility specialist to a full time only eligibility specialist. Um, we've got Tilia Rosas, uh, has come back to join us as a P R N accountant in, for budget and finance. Gotta say the girl's worth her weight, um, so far she was able to catch two different uh twenty twenty three issues that we've had that weren't corrected by year end, so they're getting that corrected to go forward to twenty twenty four. She's focusing on the closing and journal entries, and so basically what she's doing is taking those closing journal entries and saying, okay, how is this done in twenty twenty three? Wait a minute, this doesn't look quite right, and so she was able to get those things, so she's working very closely with Lisa and with Annie um, to make sure that we are getting that closed out, because we have such a short timeline for that. Um, coming up on March thirty first is when we have to roll over those books. Uh, the other benefit to that is, um, Lisa's also spending a lot of time here uh with us, getting those things done. Um, it's it's an astronomical amount of work and those ladies. Um it's, it's an astronomical amount of work, and those ladies are all pulling their weight trying to get, you know, everything wrapped up for the budget or for the twenty twenty-four closeout. Um and then you've got right on the heels of that, starting in April, our audit on the twenty twenty-four, so um just a lot of, that's a big asset, that's a heavy lift that they're, they're doing it, and we are continuing to work on that. Along those lines, we do have a conference, RA, meeting on Friday um with E. Bailey to take a look at the systems that we're using and our, what software, what um you know, how do we make that system, any of our financial systems work and work independently or work, maybe automate some things? Um what are we doing on paper processes? So I expect, I'm hoping that that's gonna give us a good report and gives a direction of how we solve and move forward, and it will hopefully also help us with, you know, staffing concerns, making sure that we have everyone moving. Um, okay, so other, other new hires, we have Alexis Gutierrez, who is now our senior program director. Um she is actually gonna replace Ryan Searan, uh who's moved back into facilities and maintenance. Um you might know Alexis from, I believe she was at the hospital previously, previously at uh Pioneer. At the Lee. Uh we have Adriana Price, who's a case aide in DHS, and Dawn Collins has joined us on the custodial, custodial front. We have Roy Dean Cox, who is an operator in Rangeley with Road and Bridge. And Jacqueline Aldabashian, and I probably don't, I probably murdered that name, uh she is with the court records office. Aldabashian? Okay. Jackie O. Okay, we can forget you.
I like that.
That's it.
I like that.
I'm not even gonna try that one. And I think I got everybody listed um on the new hires. Um so certainly welcome to them as you see them around. Um the also, the big news that we had was um we did end up making an offer and was accepted for our shared natural resources position with Reese Melton. Um he's supposed to join us on March twenty-fourth. We have a long list of things ready for him to start rolling on. I'm very excited to have him on board, um I can't wait to have him get here. It'll be good, it'll be a good thing.
So Vicky, along that line, we need to get a meeting set up with the districts right away. I mean, I know to finalize the agreement, but also set up kind of what, how to get it started and so forth. Because some of those conversations, there'll be, there'll be a little bit. Yeah, we just need to prioritize things for him so we don't over.
Oh, absolutely, because there is so much. I mean, it is a big job in and of itself, and um having it split out like this, I think will be very beneficial, but again, we've got so many different things from all over coming out, and so we definitely want to prioritize that between us and the districts. So, and that is a joint-funded position.
Vicky, can I make one correction?
Mm-hmm.
Adriana Price was hired as a case worker.
Oh, case worker, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you, Laura. Important note. Uh so in lieu of having a um natural resources person, um I've attended several different uh natural resource issues. One was the pinstemon conservation working group. Um I also, the sage grouse, uh listened to a meeting on that one. Um, gosh, Kelly, there's so many of those, I'm trying to think what else. Uh the forest working group is another uh one that I've attended. Um so there's, there's, there will be just so many things that are out there, just to kick back to the pinstemon conservation work group. That was something that happened a long time ago, I want to say that was back in twenty, maybe even before twenty seventeen, before I started. Um and we had worked on a memorandum to prevent the pinstemon, which is like a little flower plant, from becoming an endangered species. And there were several things that the county agreed, the county, Yunta County, Rio Blanco, Garfield County. Trying to think, there was like three counties involved, stretching between Colorado and Utah. And we were able to, with the BLM workout agreement, said, don't declare it as an endangered species. Yeah, let us see if we can keep it from getting there. Well, there was a list of like ten things that we were supposed to do or try and help with. Um and now it's coming to the point where there's a few things on that list that haven't been done, and one of them was like fencing areas. Again, it would be fencing areas on BLM lands to prevent these poor little pinstons from getting stepped on by sheep, particularly cows, horses, whatever. Um now, there was never anything funding-wise that said Rio Blanco County's gonna pay for BLM lands and fencing these little plants in wherever they're at. So there's a lot of that kind of movement, so I'm glad I attended that because again, not attending that meeting, you know, is that something they could come up and say, well, we voted on it and you weren't present, so cheers, here it is. You know, so again, those kind of meetings, even though this was so long ago, um it's just critical to have someone participate.
Well, and I think that's a perfect example of a scenario for that AI stuff you were just talking about. Because so for instance, the new person comes in and needs to go to one of those meetings, if they could do a search real quick on the history of what's been done there, they could get themselves out, because otherwise, if I walked into that, I'd just be sitting there kind of like going until you get caught up for several meetings, and they may be making decisions right away, so.
Yep.
I think that's something that we should look into right away, that's just one tiny goal.
Well, and I had the benefit of having worked on the regional MO too, and that's the only reason why I knew when that was coming up, it's like, what the heck is a pinstemon coming back up for? It was like, whoa. But those things on that spreadsheet, again, makes a case for that internal
Yes.
searching mechanism. Um because then we don't have to worry about what Mafa County do, we could do that externally through ChatGPT, but that is that internal search.
Would you mind getting a cost estimate on that so we know that?
I'd be glad to. Yep. Uh we are currently looking at some other revisions in the procurement policy also, uh just to clarify that process and how that looks from whether it's a federal grant, state grant, or just an internal county procedure. Some of those procedures actually look and feel a little bit differently depending on how things are. Federal has guidelines, state has some different guidelines. And so in your procurement policy, instead of addressing it kind of as a one-size-fits-all and this is the way we handle everything, it'll be a little more to find out, so I'll be working with the directors and also Dawn as a legal standpoint to say, how do we make sure that this is, is fair? Um going across the board. Um, one other thing that is out there, um so I submitted an RFP to get some idea if we can get some parliamentary procedure uh type of training on maybe like an annual basis or as commissioners come on and off the board. That was another point that I had attended at my meeting in Denver, was that consistency that everybody gets the same message, especially as new elected officials when you come in. You do go through the um CCI, the Commissioner, CCI Commissioner Training, or is it A? Yeah, CCI. Um this would be a little more detailed county structured type training. You know, how do we, as Rio Blanco County, as you as commissioners, want your meetings to look? How do you do this? Um how do those things roll? So um on that, I went ahead and just shot out an RFP, um just to get a quote on it. It does not mean that you have to proceed with that or anything, um but it was just kind of a, I thought, well, let's just see what that would cost, so.
Well, and I, I maybe you said it, but um we had talked about the possibility of offering that up to all boards at the county, and I think that would be really good. Whether it be our fair boards, our library boards, our conservation district boards, whatever, anybody that would be interested and really encourage presidents to attend.
So when I get that quote, I will certainly let you know. Um is there anything else you would, that you need to ask me a question on or anything I can give you some advice on?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I'm meeting with all of you fairly frequently, um Jen and I had a wonderful conversation yesterday. So.
Since we were stood up. Just throwing it out. Um, all right, thank you, Ms. Vicky.
Um, oh.
There isn't gonna be an open up MCCIC board.
Oh, yes, so the MCCIC board, um we, Chrissy, I don't know if we've advertised, I don't, we've advertised anything for that?
Yeah, I mean, it was advertised along with the standard orgs and commissions advertisement, but um we have not, I didn't even think about that right now, so.
So that is kind of does bring up the point of how do we get people on boards, and really it's kind of um, of course, advertising, you know, the Herald Times is always, you know, one of the best options we have. A lot of times it's word of mouth, it's, it's who, we're gonna have two of these actually, two of these. Scott filled one position and I believe Jimmy loved his resign.
Okay. We'll do it advertised. You know, and and I do think, um, because that goes along with another topic that was just gonna cover in my um update, but I, it's so hard, and I'm not, I'm not saying we haven't done the best that we can do, but the whole thing about trying to get word out. But jobs, I mean, I keep hearing people say, well, they didn't know about this job, they didn't know about that job. And so we really need to take a look at how we do that, and there again, all the ADA thing, I mean, Facebook is what is so many people's go-to. But if we can't use that, or how can we figure out how to use that? I, I don't know what that answer is, but boy, I'm sure seeing and hearing a lot the last couple of weeks about that.
And you do fall under the same, again, it goes back to if we're filming it, we're producing something on YouTube in live versus Facebook. We did have an antiquated Facebook account um that we've been trying to close. Uh it's not been updated since twenty twenty-one. Um and so that is, but again, if the county is in charge of it, if the county is pushing it, it must be ADA accessible. So whether, but now would we advertise through Monster, LinkedIn, or a?
So I got an email that, because I asked that question specifically, what things were we advertising on? And and Chrissy had provided that to me. Um of course, all the internal employees know about it, the website, Connect, um Colorado Workhorse, Connecting Colorado, the courthouse, Rangeley Town Hall, because that was a recommendation I received from somebody, apparently it's already there. So I'm, I'm kind of saying this for the public that might be listening. Um and and I'd be open, I mean, if others have ideas, we would like to hear it, but um also indeed, some of them have been posted on Grand Junction Daily Sentinel and of course, the local paper. But I keep hearing from everybody, well, we don't read the local paper. Well, what do you suggest, Facebook? Well, if we can't do that, we're looking for options, I guess is what I want to say. And same thing with go for boards and commissions, that's just a challenge to get it out there to people.
And I think you bring up a good point, um you know, people that may not know of an opening aren't necessarily looking for an opening.
Yeah.
Um but then how, I mean, I, once you sign up for LinkedIn, my gosh, you get lots of this one hiring, this one, that one hiring, so it is that personal responsibility that says, I want to stay up to date. I wanna, you know, I wanna, you know, just keep my options open.
And I do, just, just, yeah, probably off topic, but thinking um another suggestion was the utility bills in Rangeley. They say you aren't more than happy to do that, but I understand we're only, that's only once a month. We are, we're doing job applications every two weeks.
So yeah, we have the job postings are, they end, like the due dates are on the first and the fifteenth of every month.
So that doesn't always coincide with that, but anyway, just looking for those kind of options.
The, the only thing that I thought of was when we were doing the board meetings or board interviews, that one guy that I think was trying to do the solo part, he said he was interested in any board whatsoever. That's only what I think of, think of like interested in that one.
By and large, I think the majority of our appointments didn't see it in a newspaper. They've been, someone has reached out to them and said, hey, you really need to be on this board, why don't you fill out an application on your support? I, you know, I think that's one of the benefits to being in a very small community, um you know, with less than five thousand people, there's, you know, those conversations are happening kind of thing, I mean, that's probably, word of mouth is probably just as strong. Um and you know, I, I would, I would say, I think the circulation of the Herald Times is, is pretty strong, both on the online edition and the paper edition. Um but again, how do we reach those people that aren't necessarily looking is going to be a challenge and something we can certainly look at. Um you know, is there another way we can do this that, you know, when you do LinkedIn, again, it's not driving people to the Rio Blanco County website. We can actually publish out to them and make sure, basically, we've got a, they have a platform, you've got a job opening, this is what you're asking for. Same thing with Monster, so it's not.
One thing on Monster is it is a, it's like Indy, or yeah, Indy, where you have to pay per job posting and per amount of time that it's on there. So they do get very costly to do that.
So I don't get to meet your hurdle, but um they're, they have the top stories that always show up on the Facebook page. What would happen if we were to work with them and they pay them to advertise the top jobs in the county or something like that that would come out? So that would show up on Facebook as a Facebook feed. I mean, just an idea, because you always see the top stories come up every week, so it would have to get did it for the top jobs or something like that.
Can you get back to that, the originator here?
Their, their top stories, I like to say, I don't, that doesn't have to be just real, like our county jobs, it could be another job from outside of the county that they advertise too.
We can check that.
Just a thought. Because that way it does get it on Facebook for you.
Okay, that's all the handles, Misses, thank you.
Thank you. All right, um we don't probably have any county attorney updates because he's not here. So we're moving on to line item D, county commissioner updates. Sure, where do we start, right? So, um, I don't know, did we talk about how we want to do the federal one, but um my whole week last week, well, started on the twenty-seventh, went to um Washington DC for the NACO National Association Counties Meeting. Um Jennifer and I, I've got a list of the topics or the meetings we went to, I don't know which way it's best to go through, but just to make it as quick and painless as possible, I would say we met with both senators. We met with um BLM, um Department of Energy. Those are the agencies and those, and I'll, if you want to cover the committee stuff and stuff that come from those guys, anything else that I might have missed. Um I will say that we developed a list of talking points that we worked on different places, different agencies and so forth. Of course, BLM focusing on, and then, and we were actually kind of asked if what kinds of, if you had different regulations and so forth that you wanted, that would be helpful to be pulled back, um what would that look like? And so we had a list for them. And let's start with the con, the BLM Conservation Board. Um so that, and of course, National Catalans Beef Association, or I guess Public Lands Council and others probably have a, a lawsuit against that, but my, I guess from the conversations, I would say that's definitely gonna get pulled back a little. Um and then we just listed off the restricted area, restricted use areas such as lands with wilderness characteristics. Let's determine which ones really need to stay that way, which ones need to be released because they're basically being um managed as if they were wilderness. ACECs, so what is that, um areas of critical environmental concern. Um many of those are being managed as if they were Um, many of those are being managed as if they were wilderness. Of course, we had to talk wild horses and the frustration that um we still have excess horses in Rio Blanco County. Um, we did give our local office kudos for the work that they have done on that and many other things. Um, so we told them, don't touch our local office. We want to keep our leadership in our local office. Forest Service, um, and of course BLM too. We talked about NEPA reform. If we're gonna, which not if, the fact that we've cut a lot of staff. Um, there is no way we will get anything done on the ground if we don't do something with NEPA. So the focus about get that reform and the fact that we need to get more um uh forest health issues addressed. Um, some conversation about nuclear, I'll leave that for a conversation with Jennifer. She helped to coordinate that meeting. Um. We talked about PILT, uh FML and SRS somewhat. Uh, as well as then some conversations just kind of helping getting the Wolf Creek Reservoir back on the radar for some of the newcomers. Um, in DC, there is a lot of turnover in DC, just for the record. And I guess the last thing I would say is um, oh yeah, Endangered Species Act. We also requested some major um reform on that as well. Um, but I just skipped that thought that I had. Lost that thought. It got away. So I guess I was very, I, it was good to be back in DC in some ways. It's been a long ti- a while since I've been there. It must be four or five years since I've been there. Some things have changed, some things have not changed. Um, but I will tell you, it just kind of had a different feel. It was kind of nice, while there's a lot of uh uncertainty, there is definitely a feel of we're gonna get back on track and maybe be able to get down to business. So um I was pleased with that piece of it. Since we got back, um, let's see, I stopped in Denver on my way back and testified on that um wildlife bill. Was pleased that that got defeated. Um, speaking of bills, Senate Bill O three, I'm still watching right now um on there to potentially be testified. That is the anti-gun bill. Um, they have put a little note in here that they will cut off the comments at ten o'clock PM tonight.
Oh, wow.
Wow. And it's been going since ten o'clock this morning. So I don't know that I'm gonna hang around that long in the comments. But anyway, they're still, they haven't even got to the online comments. They are still all in um in building. So they must be standing there. Um, another, the Bison Bill um is on the schedule for March twentieth at one thirty. So I will still plan to testify on that one. Other bills that I should be thinking about have slipped my mind. Um. The other thing, I guess I would just, it's been a little while, but I was asked if we couldn't have maybe an update from CPW on the reservoir. Um, maybe kind of their planning process and their timeline for how they're gonna do the work.
You're too soon. You're talking about the Lake Avery?
No, talking about the repairs right now that they're doing, how they're gonna do that repair because of the concern of the mud that's coming down with the major runoff. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, the major runoff um from the reservoir, how they're gonna address that as a water quality issue potentially in the river. That was just an ask. So I think if we just have them walk us through what their process would be, would be good. And I will try to reach out to um Jonathan and see who that person is to visit while so. But that, I'll be quiet. Thank you.
Um, I met with Ricky a couple of times. Called up, get you up, gets me up AGNC uh meetings for the district and for AGNC legislation, which we're working on all of the stuff these guys are talking about. Wolf Coalition, we put together that Wolf Coalition that seems to be working pretty good. We're getting some stuff out, started on that. I think you'll see some of that coming out. I met with Eric on the broadband and facilities issues. I went to a EDCC work session with Craig. And it was interesting over there to get, they had, I, I get the uh economic report from a guy in Grand Junction at Mason University for our area. And I'm attending AGNC, but this gal was a demographic.
Ponggrater?
Yeah, thank you. I'm from Denver with CDOT or Colorado, State of Colorado. She had different, different numbers, different ideas. Um, and it was interesting that she pretty much drilled down on Moffett, Rio, Blanco and Route. And uh some, some things that were interesting to me was Route County average wage is fifty eight thousand eight hundred seventy eight dollars. Moffett County is fifty eight thousand two hundred and forty four dollars. This is forty nine. Rio Blanco is fifty nine thousand two hundred and sixteen. We're higher than all three of those other two.
It's because of our energy.
And uh the uh, another thing that that caught my mind or caught my attention was uh population in Colorado is supposed to grow in the next few years, supposed to grow up by seven point six percent. Moffett County is gonna go down by ten point two percent. Rio Blanco is gonna go down about four percent. And Route County is gonna go up by seven percent. So it doesn't make sense to me with the cost of housing and things happen uh there. But I think this all depends on energy and what happens in our, our energy. And I don't, I think that there is.
Yes.
Which I guess is what that is. It's an energy test. I think in the next four years, they, they may change your mind. That's all I.
Thank you. So like Kelly said, we went to DC for legislative conference with Naco. Um, Kelly covered a lot of, we attended public lands meetings and, and it was funny because a lot of what we covered with BLM about was covered in the conference in this meeting. Um, we had the opportunity to meet the acting director for BLM, which was nice. Um, gave him our contact information, just as issues and things come up that we will be needing to talk to him. Um, while there, um, we, Kelly and I had an opportunity to meet with the Department of Energy, one of the directors, uh particularly for nuclear. So we had a lot of questions around nuclear and she, um, I thought she did a really great job on explaining the actual process of nuclear. Um, because I think Kelly and I were both like, okay, what is, like, because I know I don't, I don't, I'm not a scientist by any means. And so having her explain it and how the actual process flows, the cycle of it, was interesting. So she, she did that as well as cleared up, you know, what, what the federal government is looking at as far as nuclear and how and if that will ever come to fruition. Because one of the things that, that struck me was that, you know, we're looking ten to twenty years out before anything's ever gonna get started with nuclear. And she's, you know, there's, there's three different systems that they're looking at to make sure that anybody that potentially is interested in having it um in their community, there's three factors that, that they're wanting, uh that they're looking at, federal government is looking at um that would be required to have um a facility and or um, what is it, a reactor? Or, you know, they even want an educational component to it so that you're training those people um to, to, to go into that industry because we just don't have that knowledge at this point. Um, did I miss anything on that? You know, the one thing that I would walk away with blown away is that in the United States, we can only, there's a bill or law. We can only run nuclear or uranium or whatever. We can only run that through the um power generation plant, what, what I'm supposed to say. But anyway, one time, and that takes ten percent of the energy out of it. Then we can't do it anymore. Other countries run it time and time and time again until they're down to only about ten percent of the energy left in those, in that um spent fuel. And so my response was, well, why don't we change the bill? You know, why don't we change the law? And my guess is that that's a direction that we'll go. And then they, and then wherever this is sitting in those nuco- around those nuclear reactors now, they could rerun that. And so I'm like going, why don't we fix it that way instead of trying to transport it across the country and do something different with it? So there were two bills or two laws that we have to address. I don't remember what the second one was. The one was the ten percent. So to piggyback off of that, the, the one that hit me the hardest was, well, this spent fuel is just sitting there that can't be cycled anymore. It's only been cycled once. Um, we are paying approximately, taxpayers are paying fines to those people that are holding the spent fuel to the tune of two million dollars a day. And that's why they are trying to get that fuel to a storage facility. Because they, our taxpayer dollars are paying for that. And I.
I heard that that's the second largest expense the United States has.
And I guess the other thing that I walked away with that I hadn't realized through the conversations with Matt is wherever they go with, assuming they go only one location, there's the possibility it could get spread out in different locations. But assuming it was only gonna go to one, there will come a whole research facility with that. So we're talking multiple people. Highly educated, highly paid jobs, scientists that are gonna come with that for a whole research and study piece to go with it. But that, I hadn't picked up on that from that. Okay, now I do. You're right. Um, I also, um, so I had a meeting with Carmen actually while I was in DC because I wanted to get some statistics on more of those social services um programs. Because with CCI, we were, when we went and met with legislators, we had talking points and we covered SNAP, Medicaid, um, CCAP and TANAP. And so I just, I had just wanted some more in-depth um statistics from her on those programs. Um, also did a STACK meeting. Um, one of the things, just really quick on STACK, um, we were, it's a transportation. Um, it's CDOT's meeting for the Northwest TPR Chair and Vice Chairs. Um, there was a gentleman from CDOT doing a presentation on the modeling of reducing greenhouse gas emissions. And in a previous meeting, the, the question was asked, well, how are you measuring greenhouse gas emissions? And the answer was, we don't have a way to, to measure greenhouse gas emissions. So at this meeting, it was brought up again that CDPHG still does not have a way to measure greenhouse gas emissions. So the question was then, so why are we looking at this modeling? When we can't even get a baseline of what greenhouse gas emissions is because we don't have a way to measure it. And, and pretty much, and what I walked away with was, I'm, I have marching orders. And so I have to do this, this modeling. And so again, the state cart before the horse. So all I'm gonna say. Club, I attended Club Twenty. Um, there was a map on Club Twenty that was presented to us. I wish this map would have been presented a long time ago on Wolves. Um, did you get to see that? Yeah, but and it's, I've seen it. Oh, have you? That was the first time it was fascinating. Not all the information was on there, but. It was, it was fascinating to watch it though, how she had it, well, I know it wasn't hers, but how it was kind of broken down to, and she, but her final part of it was how much land is actually, how much wolves can habitat on land in Colorado? And of course, it's in our area. And her message was though, that was if they weren't able to go on federal lands. If they can't go on federal lands, yep. And she even took out, you know, that they can't go, you know, that border to the different states. Anyway, I just thought it was interesting. Um, attended some CCI meetings, um, attended the Child Abuse Prevention Trust Fund Board. Uh, attended, or I met with Vicki as well as STACK. My report. So we are finally a journey at two fifty-four. Thank you, everybody.
Jim and Ekers, we didn't break for lunch, guys.
I know.
Great, great for bathroom break ones.